One, welcome to tonight's City Council meeting and Ojai Redevelopment Agency, Successor Agency Meeting, March tenth, two thousand and fifteen, seven o'clock. Could I have roll call?
Councilmember Clapp.
Present.
Councilmember Wirick.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Mayor Laura.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Blatz is out this evening.
Could Councilmember Clapp lead us in Pledge of Legions?
Follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a couple presentations this evening. We're gonna start with recognizing Glenn Hawks for his service to the city as city engineer and then as a city engineer consultant. And we're gonna, is Mr. Hawks here? Oh, there we go, right in front. Do we just, do we have some words?
I did have some words here. Right there.
Oh, there we go. I'm sorry, Mr. Hawks. I'm gonna read a brief bio of Mr. Hawks. He began working in Ventura County in the early nineteen seventies as a consultant, creating the first FEMA flood maps in the county. After the destructive nineteen sixty-nine floods, his family loved the area and decided to move to the Ojai Valley. And Glenn started his own consulting firm, Hawks and Associates, in nineteen seventy-seven. He started working for the city in the mid-seventies and began singing, signing official, not singing, signing official documents as a city engineer soon thereafter, including capital improvement project oversight, review of development projects, and property divisions and mergers. Over the years, his involvement has included nearly all capital involvement, improvement projects, from the Arcade Earthquake retrofit to the Plaza renovations, Rotary and Clough Vista Park, to more recent projects such as the Fulton Street Extension and the Y Bus Shelters, street overlays and general drainage improvements, and the currently underway Fox Canyon Baranca Bike Bridge. Upon hiring of city engineer in June two thousand and eleven, his firm stayed on as a consultant for capital improvement and inspections through December two thousand and fourteen. Glenn and his firm were recognized as Ventura County's flood and drainage experts and as a full-service firm covering all aspects of civil engineer. He will be remembered as a sharp engineer with a kind heart. Well, thank you, Mr. Hawks. And on behalf of the city, I would like to dedicate or give you this plaque from the city of Ojai and would like to invite you to the podium if you have a couple comments.
Well, you've pretty much covered everything. I was going to mention some of the things, how I started. It was, it was the late seventies that I did all of the flood insurance studies for Ventura County, including the cities, which included Ojai. I also did Orange County and San Bernardino and Riverside County, plus a few studies back on the east coast. So, I had a large involvement with that and that was probably the most notable thing. I was very happy to get Fulton Street finished. I first started in that in nineteen ninety-five. So, it took twenty years to get there and they used to kid me and say I couldn't retire until it was built anyhow. So, we finally got that done. And, yeah, that's, that's about it. One of the other things that I've been proud of, I've helped Nordoff High School a lot, the stadium over there. I designed and built that in nineteen seventy-two. And I, I've always enjoyed doing things for the school over there. I had, most of my kids went through school there and served as student body presidents. So, I have a great love for Ojai. I did wanna say that when I came up here in nineteen, well, it was actually nineteen, about nineteen seventy-seven, the company wanted to open an office up here and they transferred me up here. And when I came up here, I never really looked anywhere but Ojai. The first time I just drove up, I just looked at a map and said, well, let's see, it's inland by the mountains and it's close to the beach. How can it be any better than that? And so, we looked for places in Ojai and found one right away. I moved four times in Ojai until I'm over on Fairview Road now and I've been there for thirty-five years. So, I love Ojai and I appreciate all the people that have, that have, we've got a lot of creative people in the community and dedicated people. And sometimes it gets into a little bit strenuous and difficult, but by and large, I think the council is, and managers have dealt with things very well. So, I have fond memories of Ojai and thank you for even mentioning it. I don't really like recognition very much. I've only been up to this thing here maybe ten times over those, all those years, so. And I appreciate the good public works directors you've had, including Greg Grant now. He's been, been great. First one that was actually a registered engineer, which is the main reason they needed me, was to have a licensed engineer. And I'm retired now and downsizing from my home on Fairview into a mobile home down in the Ojai Villa off of Baldwin Road. So, it's not too bad for me. It's a little stressful for my wife. Anyhow, thank you for the recognition and I do appreciate the wonderful people here in Ojai and all the things that their community involvement.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hawks, and it's been a pleasure, too.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You know, Glenn, your devotion to the city is, is just unmatched and I wanna thank you very much. And the loss of your historic memory is gonna be felt dearly. We have very little historic memory now in our city and I really recognize how important that is and I hope someday you won't mind a phone call or two if we need to ask a question because you've been very devoted to the city and I wanna thank you very much.
Thank you. Yep.
Any other remarks? Well, yes.
I just, on behalf of the staff, I wanna thank Glenn. You know, I think back, where the heck was I in nineteen seventy-seven? Where were you, Mayor?
I was in here. About here.
But, but I think, you know, Glenn, Glenn is very modest and, and his accomplishments have been understated tonight and he really has been the go-to guy for us. And I'm especially thankful to his, the time that he's spent with Greg, bringing Greg up to speed on the things we do in the city and, and the things about the city. Glenn has an encyclopedic knowledge of every nook and cranny in this town and everything that comes up, he knows. Oh, yeah, you know, back in nineteen eighty-three. So, Glenn, we've, we've really appreciated working with you and we wish you the best.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hawks, and if you may come up and...
I'll try to find a place in my... But, I'll stick around for a little while. BYU's playing a basketball game tonight against Gonzaga, so I don't wanna miss it.
Yes, you, you wanna make a comment? Yes, thank you.
I wanna thank all the work he's done for us here in Ojai. I wanna thank the work that he did in the early times on the flood. Coincidentally, after all of these years of jousting with FEMA, his map on the flood was right and it was amended a couple of years ago to correct the mistakes that FEMA has made and forced two-hundred-and-seventy-five families to live in a flood zone they normally shouldn't have had to live in. I will tell you that I attended a number of meetings when it came time for the San Antonio Bridge, where they decided they were gonna route ten thousand cars down Gridley to Grand to meet another five thousand cars. Thank God, we had somebody that knew how things worked in this community because Caltrans didn't know when they came up here. Their jobs come in, they could care less how much they disrupt, and we've had a number of other issues with flood mappings inside the city. And we've had just a number of general issues where we've had a resource that's been able to extract and get us out a lot of these things that would have been otherwise enormous problems. Now, I didn't see a lot of you at these meetings we held over at Chaparral and a number of these other little side committee things, but I wanna tell you, we have somebody that is community effort. He's really done a great job. I really wanna thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Hawks. Anyone else wishing to comment? No? Yes, Mr. Grant.
Well, one of the things that we've been going through down in the lower public works yard is we have these sea crates, which are kinda the cheap way to store things these days. And we have a lot of blueprints, probably in the range of three to five thousand blueprints, I'd say, we've gone through in the past six months. So, we've organized all these blueprints and, and we put them all in the piles for parks and city facilities and streets and parcel maps and everything. So, it all, it goes back and really all that, all that story started in nineteen seventies. And it's amazing when you look through those thousands and thousands of blue lines, how Glenn's name is on at least half of the maps out there, half of the, half of the drawings and so on. So, it's pretty amazing when you go through, it's just the multitude of work. I mean, I, we kinda, you mentioned a few of them, Mayor, that projects and so on, but it's just all kinds of things that are going on on a regular basis here at the city. So, it's very impressive. And the other part is if you go up to the Public Works, the back room we have, we have a small conference table and we've got binders for all the projects and the same thing, you can pull that out. So, it's been tremendous having Glenn here for all of his institutional knowledge. It's one of the things we seem to lack around here a lot of times. So, it's good to have him and all of his background. And I think he cleaned off his desk pretty well. The only thing he kinda forgot was the, he's gotta have that engineer's ruler and an architect's 'cause he, he was a city architect as well. And I think the other part he left was his son, Richard, was quite a player at the Nordoff basketball team back in the seventies. He was, he was the All-Star that took the team to some, was it the championship at that time or just down close?
No, they, they got carried to the final four. The most important thing about it was they were the first team that beat Santa Clara after like fifteen years.
Right, okay.
Nobody could beat Santa Clara and Lucianovic and he was on the team that beat them and I was there at the game and it was he...
So, I see some people nod their heads, they were there, I think, you know? So, that's, right. So, that was, I think, that was hidden back in the back there, too, Glenn, so I wanted to pass that on. And thanks very much, Glenn, for all your help and we'll give him a call.
Thank you.
Can I go watch my game?
Yes.
Thank you, don't forget us.
Okay, I will.
The next presentation is a proclamation recognizing March eleventh, two thousand and fifteen as Arbor Day to support efforts to protect the city's trees and woodland and to plan and care for trees for the future generations. Whereas in nineteen, in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees and whereas this special day was named Arbor Day and was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world and whereas Arbor Day draws our attention to the usefulness of trees as they can reduce the erosions of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habit for wildlife. And whereas trees are also a renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees, trees in our city increase property value, enhance the economic validity, validity of business areas and to beautify, and beautify our community. And whereas Arbor Day highlights that trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas Arbor Day serves as such an important reminder that the celebration has been expanded to an Arbor Week. And whereas the state of California Arbor Week is March seventh through the fourteenth, a timeframe that the city would like to share, now therefore it be proclaimed that I, Severo Lara, Mayor of the city of Ojai, and on behalf of the city, Ojai City Council, do hereby proclaim March eleventh Arbor Day in the Ojai Valley Inn and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day to support efforts to protect the city's trees and woodland and to plan and care for trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generation. Thank you. Is anybody from Tree Committee here? No? We'll pass this on to Arbor Day. Thank you. Next on our agenda are Commission Reports. Commission Reports is a time set aside during the first meeting of each month of the chair or the representative of any of the four city commissions and Buildings Appeals Board to make a brief verbal report on the activities to the city council and community. These reports are intended to be informational. No action will be discussed or taken. And I do have speaker's card and Vice Chair, Mr. Walker.
Craig Walker with the Historic Preservation Commission. And at our joint meeting in February, it seemed to be a consensus with our commission and with the council that we form a subcommittee to look at some of the language and the historic preservation code and maybe come up with some recommendations for the council on how we can clean up and maybe clarify some of that language. So, at our last meeting, that intention was made, but Mr. Summer, our attorney, felt that we should present that to you and make sure there was buy-in from the council before we actually formed the commission and I think, or the committee. I think our idea would be that we would have three of our commissioners and our, our council rep liaison and also the city attorney, that we could form a small committee and sit down and work with the rest of the commission to generate some ideas and then once we get some recommendations from our commission to present them to the council. So, with your approval, we would start that process at our next meeting. Thank you.
And did Mr. Summers indicate that this would be the appropriate process to do that, to form that subcommittee?
Well, he felt that it would be good to present the idea to the, to the council. You've had two meetings and it hasn't been on the agenda, so I just figured that I would stand up and let you know what we hope to do.
And I would defer it to our city attorney to see what the best process would be, to see if we could, to put it on the agenda to discuss it or...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, if the Vice Chair of the HPC wants some action from this council, we'll have to put it on as an agendized item, but let me editorialize a bit. I recall the discussions at the last meetings and I think there was some consensus that we move forward, meaning we, meaning the HPC, along with assistance from council and possibly other staff to begin looking at that chapter of the code for possible updates and changes. Whether the HPC handles it through an ad hoc subcommittee or otherwise is, there's no real preference, I mean, that's somewhat common.
Yeah, I would, I would actually agree with that process, just so that you go ahead and actually form that subcommittee. I guess Mr. Summers didn't have the, the privilege beating that, being at that meeting, so he probably didn't know that you, there was some clear consensus between the council and the commission to form that or the subcommittee.
Okay.
So, I would definitely just go ahead of your next HPC committee and form, and form that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Any comments?
And is it too late for them to put that on the agenda? For Thursday?
On the, well, Wednesday, our meeting, Thursday?
Thursday.
I think they can do that without agendizing and I think they can do it as a discussion to...
So, you could proceed on Thursday?
They can just proceed on Thursday.
At the end, when we have commissioner comments, we could, the, the chair could form that committee and...
Yeah, it's going to be an ad hoc committee, so you don't really need the action of the entire, of the entire commission to create it. I think the chair would have that implied power to basically said, will you be on a committee, will you? Then just go through and ask and then once you get less than a quorum, that's where you stop.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I see Chair Addison, would you like to give a Arts Commission Report?
Yeah, I'm very pleased to be here. I'd like to report on two of our ongoing projects that are important to us, the first of which, every year we offer grants and we've put out the proposals and we're now soliciting from artists throughout the community and we'll be selecting those in the coming month. The importance here is that each year, it seems, most of the grants we offer are to organizations that support the community at large, particularly children, not just individual artists. We do, of course, encourage individual artists to propose projects, but last year, for example, for the first time, we received a proposal from the Ojai Youth Opera Group, which we granted, and that is becoming a flourishing group that is engaging a number of students in music. The other project that's going forward is our third annual round of artist-student-mentor applications. We're seeking the artists at this point and then we will pair those with students who apply for the program and each pair will then work throughout the summer for a minimum of fifty hours, during which time these professional artists will engage with these students, juniors and seniors. And at the end of that project, they'll have a reception and a display of the work that they've created here in the city hall. It's a powerful program, the impact on the students and on the artists, I might add, who are, who are thrilled to work with these young people. Two new initiatives that are moving forward. One, as a consequence of the extensive renovations at the Ojai Valley Inn, that triggered their contribution of funds towards a public art project. And so, our Public Art Committee is now beginning the process of working with the Ojai Valley Inn. The money that is required has already been deposited with the city, thirty-two thousand dollars, and that will be used to create a work of art. My understanding is that it will be in the lobby of the Ojai Valley Inn and it will be an Ojai artist and that, of course, is accessible to the public. So, we're very pleased to see that going forward, under the guidance of the new ground rules that were established through much work by our Public Art Committee and the city council to create the ordinance that now frames that activity. And the fourth thing I wanna mention is that last week, Roger Conrad, a fellow member of the Arts Commission, and I met with Tony Thatcher, who's the current Chair of the Ojai Museum Board. And we met to discuss the possibility of exploring more coordination between Ojai Arts, especially through the Art Commission, and the museum, particularly with reference to the collection of art that belongs to the city of Ojai. I'm sure you remember that each year in our budget, we include a small sum, I think it was three thousand dollars last year, and our Art Acquisition Committee then visits studio, of studios of Ojai artists and eventually then selects works for purchase for the city of Ojai collection. My vision, and Tony, I think, shares this, is that we should be able to find a way that we can connect with the museum so that there's better storage for the collection and also so that each year or every other year, there is a special exhibition of the city's collection. So, I will keep you posted in coming months as we develop that program.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chair Addison. Thank you. Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill, you have a commissioner to report to?
No.
Oh, no, it says commission report. Would it be under public, public comment or...
Under public comment.
Under, okay, so I'm gonna go, yes, Mr., Chair Daddy?
At six o'clock tomorrow night, the Building Appeals Board will hold a commission, a meeting. And on that agenda will be probably two major items of interest. One be, one will be the second unit compliance process and program. The other one will be the blighted building. So, those two items will be tomorrow night here at six o'clock. So, everybody that's interested or has some input, we would certainly like to have as many people participate as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lajowski?
Even though this looks like a very short meeting tonight, I'm gonna go after this. I got a newborn baby at home. But I just wanted to bring you up to date, the Planning Commission, we just got back from a conference in Newport Beach with the League of California Cities and it was an incredible conference. It was two days. We were really very packed full, busy days, packed full of information, the California Environmental Quality Act, affordable housing, complete streets, wildfire prevention. We went to, there was a tour of the Great Park down in Irvine, just a number of events and educational breakout sessions we were involved in. As a relatively new planning commissioner, I found, I found it incredibly valuable. We also had, you know, planning commissioners with ten years' experience who had the same sentiments. So, I know you'll be speaking about such educational things later tonight, but just wanted you to know from my experience, it was, it was a great experience. Otherwise, on the Planning Commission, we've been extremely busy, as you know. There's a lot of projects coming down the pike these days. It appears that the economy's ramping up again and we're doing our best, as we all are. So, that's about it. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Then thank you for your commitment and most importantly, congratulations for your newborn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good evening and good luck on a short meeting.
Thank you. Anybody, any other commissioners? No? Okay, well, we're gonna move down to public comment. Public comment is a time set aside during the meeting for members of the public to address the City Council/Successor Agency Board on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Many matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the council board and will generally be referred to staff or, and/or placed on the subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken. Persons wishing to address the council board are requested to fill out a speaker card prior to the council board reaching this point on the agenda. Comments must be limited to three minutes or less. Our first speaker is Mr. Hill?
I was mistaken, I should be on the agendized items.
Okay, can say item on L or...
Yes.
Yes, okay, great. Mr. Tumamait?
Patrick Tumamait, City of Ojai resident. Good evening, Mr. Laura and councilmembers. I'm here to make an announcement. As you may or may not know, in native culture, we have, we do prayer ceremonies, you know, to welcome, you know, rain, to welcome families, and it's all about the environment usually. And we do our prayers to what we call grandfather, our creator, and Hutash, which is Mother Earth. And this Saturday, we're going to do a prayer rain ceremony at Soul Park and it starts at eleven o'clock in the morning and it's free of charge except for the idea that you have to pay at the entrance gate on Saturday and that's four dollars. And so, my sister and myself are gonna, you know, run this little ceremony and along with the help of Don Teeding and Alestra Coin and some others. So, we hope that the general public could make it. It's something we need. We, we need prayer, we need the rain and however it comes, it's God's will. I know that in the past, my father used to do a, a rain ceremony song and he said to me one day, I'm seven out of eight. I said, what do you mean, seven out of eight? I've sung that song seven times or eight times and seven times within twenty-four hours it's rained. And, and he, he had so many other things that he's done that, you know, that was really surprising. My sister at one time was in, in Mexico at a ranch with, with her boyfriend and they hadn't seen rain in seven years and she had a, a little gathering of kids from the neighborhood and they were talking about the rain ceremony and the prayers and the song and she said, well, I'll sing it for you. That night, it rained after seven years of drought, so it's very possible.
Thank you.
And so, I hope that the general public, it's open to the general public and any everybody and everybody's invited, so I hope all, all of you can come.
Thank you. You, what time did you mention? Eleven o'clock?
It starts at eleven o'clock.
Okay.
If you can get there early, it'd be best. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Ulrich?
William Ulrich, four-eight-seven Gridley Road. I am before you as a private citizen. I am before you as a private citizen. As an introduction, I would like to comment that having attended the Ojai Basin Groundwater Management Agency meeting of February 26th, my observation as the sole member of the public at that board meeting that, once again, Ms. Clapp, our council liaison, failed to appear. And while there is some benefit to an alternate, and when an alternate, as the case with Councilman Haney, has not had a lot of experience there, suffice it to say, I would think that that may impair the capacity of the council to be fully noticed of what's going on. So I'll just add that to the percentage of failure to appear that I have remarked upon in the past regarding that particular agency and that particular liaison. Number two, and this is relative to the second unit compliance ordinance, version three, and the request that, I guess it's been sent to the Building Appeals Board to be redlined, certainly it's been sent to the Planning Commission to be redlined. I have the following comments. There seems to be, this document, as far as an ordinance, was initially adopted by this community in 1983. It's been getting kicked down the road by every city council since. It has not complied with anything. It's never been enforced. It's an incredible document at this point, and it does not need to be rewritten, redlined. It needs to be gutted and made simple and easy to understand with less documentation and paperwork. The more I look into it, the more voluminous the paperwork becomes. The repeated iterations by repeated councils. There had been something in the interim since 1983, something along the lines of '26, if you count a council term to be two years, relative to its agenda and exposure. Having said that, doesn't, it was apparently all along, and right to the present, version three, intended not to bring in compliance from the illegal, unpermitted units, because it has achieved exactly what would be the intent. 10% compliance is what you've got with the current iteration in three and a half years. And this isn't because people haven't come forward, it's because most of them have been turned away at the building department counter, because they didn't comply with the requirements out of the box. And they were also not told, "Well, you know, if you have a problem with this, file," since it's been in existence, "file an appeal with the Building Appeals Board." Most people have been told, "No, you don't qualify." I'm down to 25 seconds, so I'll go through this rather quickly unless I'm given some leave for about another 60 seconds past it. There seems to be confusion regarding Title IX and Title X review responsibilities. The readjustment of the 2006 start date is a policy issue. Deed restrictions are a policy issue. Owner occupation is a policy issue. Length of lease is neither a zoning issue nor a building issue, but a policy issue. Garage conversions are a policy issue. Single utility service is a policy issue. Restriction of 640 square feet in the aggregate is a policy issue. State Code 1941 adoption and inclusion is a policy issue. Confidentiality is a policy issue, and the sunset clause is a policy issue. That means you folks, you need to give direction. You need to have a position on these issues and not send it on down for someone to advise you. You need to, these are all policy issues. They should not be set by either the city manager, staff, or the commissions. Health and safety enforcement for units that are unfit for habitation must be a high priority for this City Council. This is not a policy decision or a policy issue, it's a state mandate. This current second unit compliance policy that we have is incredibly restrictive. Council has never indicated a position that expected better than a 10%, which is what you've got, compliance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ulrich. Ms. Lynch?
Hi, I'm Mary Lynch. I'm your city librarian, and I wanted to thank you for all the help that you've given the Friends of the Library and through the Friends to us. So I thought I'd come before you and tell you a little bit about what the library's been doing for the fiscal year of 2013-14. We checked out 91,648 items. We answered 2,739 reference questions. Ojai Library has 16,337 registered patrons, which is pretty good considering we only have in 7,000 sole citizens. We own 28,866 items, which is down about 10,000 from the last time I spoke to you, because we did a humongous weed. We placed 7,521 requests for items not held by Ojai Library or already in use by other Ojai patrons. We spent $35,320 on books, discs, both audio and video, magazines and newspapers. We own 2,603 DVDs, more than 95% donated by the community. I have been told we have a very eclectic collection, and eclectic or not, it is the most heavily-used collection in the library. We have provided approximately 10,908 hours of internet service. There are, or were, 6,534 views of Ventura's webpage per day county-wide. No, I don't know how many came from Ojai, they can't tell me. Wireless access is used heavily enough that they had to install a second router. Both routers are up 24/7, and there are often people in the patio using the internet after hours. We had 93,164 people coming through the library. Our Facebook page has 353 likes. We presented 144 adult programs with 1,999 participants and 265 children's programs with 6,731 participants. Our programming statistics for children's programs have doubled. We are still open 55 hours a week for 2,780 service hours a year. The Homework Center was open for 134 days with 2,130 participant sessions. We once again participated in Word Fest, eight programs, 210 participants. The last time I spoke to you, the library in Ventura County were planning for new ADA-compliant restrooms. We expected to be closed for the first two weeks of December while the present bathrooms were jackhammered out and the new configuration installed. We were actually closed for a week and a half, and the staff workroom was refurbished as well. We are very pleased that people in wheelchairs will now be able to get down the hallway easily, and that there is sufficient turning space in the bathrooms, and the fixtures are installed at a height that makes it easy for everyone to use. We accomplished all this with four full-time equivalent staff, four student workers, and a long list of wonderful volunteers. To be specific, there were 413 volunteers who put in 1,355 hours. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Good information. Thank you.
Press statistics, actually.
Mr. Daddy?
Counsel, speaking for Ojai Flow. Tomorrow, after a very, very, very long journey, some of us more than 10 years, we have our day in court tomorrow. Tomorrow is the hearing. It's at 9:00 in the morning. It's at the Appellate Court Division. It is at 200 Santa Clara Street in Ventura. And tomorrow, we have the appellate court here, the appeal of Golden State Water to overturn the eminent domain case that was won by Casitas. So tomorrow hopefully starts the end of this. In the meantime, Golden State, in its never-ending quest to pilfer us, has sent an advice letter in, and that is one of these mechanisms that they use. The city mayor of Claremont gave testimony, which I can send to Rhonda if you like, where Golden State now has 38 different mechanisms to charge us different monies, not just the water use, 38 different mechanisms. And I failed to answer a question for Council Clapp, oh, two, three meetings ago. Yes, the Public Utility Commission gets 1.5% of the utility bills to fund them. That's not very much money, figuring that the San Onofre plant will be in excess of $10 billion to decommission at one plant, and the Public Utility Commission will take their cut. This advice letter is something that is going around, and it's going to the Office of Ratepayer Advocates. And what it seeks to do is collect a million dollars in water conservation fees. The city and the community of Ojai has been magnificent in cutting down its water, being very careful, conscientious. And because we have conserved and because we've sacrificed and because we've spent money and we've done the best we could and been model citizens, we're being penalized by the Public Utility Commission's structure. And what we're being penalized for is not using water, not being excessive with water, not being abusive with water. Now, we said a long time ago, even more importantly than getting away from Golden State Water, was to get away from the Public Utility Commission. The Public Utility Commission has come up with a new ruling that since Golden State Water hasn't given them accurate information, and they're off by about 45% usage, since they have inaccurate information that's been determined by the Office of Ratepayer Advocates, they have no other alternative other than to use Golden State Water's information. The other thing of note to this council is Councilman Wierich and I were present at that initial court hearing, the very first one on this go-round, which was September 3rd. At that time, I asked Judge Long for the audit reports having to do with the fines on the $40 million worth of questionable charges that Golden State did in its billings and contract it submitted. As a result of that, they were fined $12 million. And as a result of that, Golden State was ordered to pay Ojai ratepayers back $970,000. And the rules work this way. They'll give you back a few dollars each month till hell freezes over. But they get to collect their million dollars starting billing us now for all of it. It is an incredibly uneven task. And so as we start this, just to let you know, when I asked for that five, six, seven-year-old audit report that was due a year prior, Judge Liang went ahead and moved up our hearing and our dates to start two weeks prior to us being able to get the reports for that $40 million worth of charges that was disallowed, resulting in where their $12 million fine was. So I want to let you know that the tasks that we're facing, and where we're going, and what we're doing, and I'll keep this council apprised, but I think maybe with the Styrofoam in the bags, the night skies, and the anti-smart meter ordinances, it might be time for this council to craft a request of our elected officials that we at least have elected CPUC commissioners. Our past chair of the CPUC has just had a subpoena sent to their home a few weeks ago, where the Attorney General of the State of California seized personal computers and 6,000 emails, intimating that there may have been judge shopping and collusion and rate activity. So just so everybody knows, I'll go on defense, the answer to slander is truth, or at least libel. And so that's where we are with this thing. It's a much bigger task than any of us really anticipated. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. Ms. Reeves?
Hello. I'm Ann Reeves. I'm a 20-year Ojai resident, and currently I am the only Ojai Valley resident serving on the Ventura County Civil Grand Jury. And I'm here to encourage, since we're now in a recruiting period with the Civil Grand Jury, I'm here to encourage all of our residents to consider applying for this absorbing and very worthwhile commitment. Applications are being accepted for jurors to serve from July 1st of this year through July 1st of next year. And the deadline is April 15th, easy to remember. The grand jury, this grand jury, the civil grand jury, does not hear criminal cases, so it's not like the Ferguson grand jury. And it does not give evidence in court. In fact, you are excused from jury duty if you are currently serving on the civil grand jury. What it is, is a group of 19 volunteers who serve as kind of a public watchdog, investigating things that the public complains about, perhaps unfairness or inefficiency in any office or agency of the city or county government. School districts, libraries, jails, hospitals, city administrations, water districts, and so on. And by the way, you get to tour all of these places, or have the city managers. The Ojai city manager came in recently and talked to us, and your officer here recognized me from the tour we did of the Ojai Police Station and holding cells. So you get to tour everywhere in the county. The CSI lab for Ventura is number two in the United States. You get to take a harbor tour, actually go out onto the harbor tour, the great water facility in Oxnard, which is the water purification facility. You know, you learn everything about the county, and it's an amazing adventure in learning. Also, here's the catch, jurors do meet almost every day and commit about 15 to 30 hours a week for one year. So service is not compatible with a full-time job unless you have the night shift. Nobody gets rich, but jurors do get a stipend of $25 a day, and you also won't lose money on your gas, because they give you the IRS rate of 57 cents a mile. So I have an economical car, and I actually wind up getting extra money. You know, I pay about $5 a day to go down there, and I get 25 back, so that's, you know, that helps. You won't lose, even though you're far away. And by the way, you'll have an advantage if you're coming from a far-flung area like Ojai that gets a lot fewer applicants than the closer places like Ventura or Oxnard. You will have an advantage. They try to get, to spread around the representation to different parts of the county. So at any rate, it varies, it's very, very flexible. It varies, your amount of time you put in will vary extremely, depending on how much time you have to give. I don't have any kids or grandkids, and I like the work there, and so I put in a lot of time. But many people come for the morning meetings, and then they might be gone by one, say. You'll take a lot of field trips. You'll meet all the important people in the county. All the top execs come and do their dog and pony shows. And to learn more, we would like to invite you to attend our open house, which is next Wednesday, March 18th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. And you can hear more about what the service actually is. You can view the beautiful chambers that we have, meet current jurors, and enjoy some refreshments. So I've left some flyers here inviting you to that open house with the information. I've also left some brochures. In the meantime, I invite you to visit our website. Just Google Ventura County Grand Jury, where you can download an application or a complaint form, or you can call us for more information at our phone number, which is given on the website. So let's make sure that the Ojai Valley continues to be part of this influential group of citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. We can make sure to put flyers out in the City Hall. Thank you. Mr. Quilisi?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council members and distinguished staff and others. Steve Quilisi, 516 West Eucalyptus. I mentioned this before the meeting to Rhonda, but I wanted to compliment you on the new look of the agendas for these meetings that are on the city website. It's all in one document with links to all the backup material, and it's a much nicer job to try to download all of that and put it on my web, on my iPad to bring to the meetings, but thank you very much for that. Second, I'm gonna be at the Building Appeals Board meeting tomorrow, and I have spent some time looking at Titles IX and X, and I have questions and comments. I think there are a number of people in the community who will be doing that, and even more, who would be doing that if they were encouraged. And if there is a way that the council can encourage the citizenry to take a look at the municipal code, the pieces that they're interested in, and figure out which board or commission or just the council or commission or just the council is responsible for those things, I think that you would get a lot more citizen input. It worked very well the last time the Planning Commission sent you a draft resolution and I think it would work very well for all of the other things that eventually flow up here to the council. The more citizen input that you have, I think the more data you will have to make good decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have any more public comment. Oh, yes, one more. Sorry. Mr. Lambert?
John Lambert, Levittaraminalaina here in Ojai. You have an item on the agenda today, which is the continuation of our quest to build a room into the bookstore here in town. And the light at the end of the tunnel is getting brighter and we're very happy about that. I just wanted to go on record in saying, one of our board members noticed last night when we downloaded from the website the administrative report that is to be discussed, a problem which I was able to bring to the staff today. And they have worked very hard on trying to help us understand and solve any questions we had with it. So, I just want to be on record that we really appreciate the work that Ms. Gould and the staff here has done to help us move this whole process forward. So, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you would like to comment, it's item number two on it when it comes up, you're more than welcome. Anybody else in the public wishing to speak on public comment? No, I will move on. I do have a couple consent items that we will pull. Consent item L, I've been asked, and consent item M. Any other items wanting to be pulled? No? If not, hearing anything, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we move approval of consent calendar A through K and N and O.
Your second?
Second.
Roll call.
Clap.
Yes.
Wyrick?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Lar?
Yes. I'm going to pull item L and we do have two commissioners and a former council member/mayor wanting to comment on this item. May I start off with Ms. Smith?
I'd rather you stop with the commissioners.
Mr. Walker?
I defer.
Commissioner Hill, please.
Trying to get up here all night.
I just wanted to make a comment and read to you something that will be germane to your discussion tonight in regards to the property at 1001 Foothill Road. And this is the conditions for agreement at the Libby Gate House located at 1001 Foothill Road. And I'm just going to read a portion of this. Item 1 states, "Prior to the issuance of any building or demolition permits for the subject property, the property owner shall submit for review and approval by the Historic Preservation Commission for compliance with Ojai Municipal Code Title 4, Chapter 8 and Chapter 9, and with the United States Secretary of the Interior Standards." The second item, "Any proposed changes to the property that may not require building permits, such as but not limited to, changes to window and door openings and change of exterior surfaces shall be reviewed and approved by the Historic Preservation Commission prior to conducting the changes." So, what I'm going to say, my comment on this, is that there have been changes made and this meeting before the Historic Preservation Commission has never happened. From the beginning, we have never had the chance to review these changes. We've commented, we've asked what's happening, but we've never had the opportunity to face this particular issue. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Commissioner Walker?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it is important to note that the Historic Preservation Commission evaluates applications for the addition of buildings, walls, and other structures to landmark properties all the time. That's part of our job. The municipal code and individual landmark agreements make clear that any new addition or construction on a landmark property must be reviewed by the commission to determine if it will impact the historical character of the building. In fact, a year or so ago, we reviewed a similar request from another landmark owner in the arbalata who wanted to convert his three-foot rock wall to a six-foot rock wall. We determined that the wall was too massive, would block the view of the landmark from the street, and would degrade the historical and architectural integrity of the property. The owners of that landmark, who also purchased their home after it was designated, followed the rules and were denied a work permit. The property owner covered in this report that you have before you built his wall at the same time without obtaining a work permit, but the staff doesn't seem to be ready to enforce the law in this case. How is this fair to those landmark owners who follow the rules? Why landmark buildings if you're not going to enforce the agreement? The Historic Preservation Commission would like to see the landmark agreement, the Mills Act agreement, and the Historic Preservation Ordinance enforced. Just because the owner went ahead and built the wall without a work permit doesn't justify allowing it to remain. The enforcement issue before you is important for three reasons. First, the wall seriously degrades the historic character of this important landmark. First, the wall completely blocks the public's view of the landmark. Second, the wall is totally out of character for this particular home, for the historic neighborhood in which it is located, and for the historic period during which the structure was built. Second, this is a Mills Act property, which means public funds have been given to the owner to maintain the property as a city landmark. I'm sure other tax-paying homeowners would be upset to learn that someone getting a sizable tax benefit could so blatantly ignore their agreement to maintain the property as promised. Three, overlooking this violation will send a message to other Mills Act property owners that they now only have to follow the building code, not the terms of their Mills Act agreement and the Historic Preservation Code. What you decide here will affect the city's other landmarks. The staff report before you, including that of Mrs. Waldstein's report from April 9th, is based on erroneous, incomplete, and irrelevant information. In fact, the report contradicts other documents contained in the packet. First, the staff report says the wall is four to five feet high. The wall is actually five feet, seven inches tall, measured from dirt level, but the dirt itself is three to four inches above the road, making the effective height of the wall nearly six feet. And the wall rises to over seven feet on either side of the walkway and driveway gates. This wall is particularly imposing because it was built right next to the road. It completely obliterates any view of the house or the grounds. Not only does it obscure the view of the house from the road, it blocks views of the arbalata as well. Mr. Libby envisioned the arbalata as open, unobstructed vistas through a park-like setting. The wall definitely impacts the historic character of the house and Mr. Libby's vision of the arbalata. Second, the staff report says that after review with the city attorney, it was determined that the wall was not in violation of the landmark property agreement. I'm assuming this review is with Mr. Fletcher, who was city attorney in April. I would like to see a copy of that review because the wall clearly violates both the landmark property agreement and the city code. Mr. Fletcher's review was most likely inaccurate because staff's investigation appears to have focused on whether the wall conforms to city building code, not the Historic Preservation Code. What's in dispute is the lack of a landmark work permit, not whether the wall violates the building code. Third, the staff report says that the landmark is not compromised because the existing natural stone walls and patios were built by the previous owner. This is completely irrelevant. City code says that any new construction on a landmark property, not including maintenance and repair, must be reviewed by the HPC and issued a work permit. This is to allow the HPC to make sure the standards and regulations governing landmarks are followed and to make sure that the property owner follows their Mills Act agreement and other agreements that they've signed. The owner constructed a six-foot wall on the property without consulting anyone. That is a violation of both their property agreement and the Historic Preservation Code. The staff report says the landmark property agreement does not list any significant features as protected except for the windows and door openings to the main house. First of all, the landmark agreement says what is protected is the main residence, guest cottage, and property. This means that these are not to be altered, but the agreement also says that any new construction on the property must be reviewed based on the Secretary of the Interior Standards. And when we look at the property agreement that they sign, it does say that the owner shall preserve and maintain the historic landmark property and its character-defining features according to the Rules and Regulations of the United States Secretary of the Interior Standards on Rehabilitation and Guidelines, and the conditions imposed by the city's Historic Preservation Commission adopted as Exhibit B. And it was Exhibit B that Mr. Commissioner Hill read to you just a few moments ago. What's missing from the staff report and your packet is the city law governing landmarks and it says in it that... Oh, I would like to just say what the relevant Secretary of the Interior standard is. It's number nine. This is a list of the 10 standards. And number nine says, "New additions," which this wall is, "exterior alterations or related new construction shall not destroy historic materials that characterize the property. The new work shall be differentiated from the old and shall be compatible with the massing, size, scale, and architectural features to protect the historical integrity of the property and its environment." So, that's the standard that these people agreed to maintain when they purchased the property. Basically, the people, when they got their Mills Act agreement, they laid out a 10-year plan of what they were going to do to the property over that 10 years and nowhere in here is any proposal to raise that wall from being three feet up to six feet and higher to block the view of the house. And finally, the code of the Historic Preservation Code says, "Approval from the Historic Preservation Commission or the City Council on appeal shall be required before the following actions affecting a landmark may be undertaken." And number one is construction and reconstruction. So, any kind of construction work, new construction, it needs to be reviewed. Now, like I said before, we get all kinds of requests that come in. Usually, it's not a problem that people do want to preserve the historic integrity, so they are approved by our commission. It's only under exceptional circumstances when they are not, and this is one of them. And we feel that the council should either ask the staff to enforce these agreements or to at least form a committee where maybe we could sit down with the city attorney and go through all these documents and come up with a clarification and a way forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to take questions after Ms. Smith speaks because I also want to answer Mr. Hill's questions and I do want to make sure that we address a lot of issues that come up. But Ms. Smith, could please come up?
Good evening, council and staff. It's nice to be here. I went over and looked at Libby Landmark Number 18 today. What they have done is outrageous. They have created a fortress. There is no way that the public passing by on foot or on car could anyway see the landmark property that they are now receiving Mills Act tax benefits for. The wall is six feet because it is raised about four inches from the ground. It looks like a fortress. That's all I can say. I don't know who's buying properties up in the arbalata and foothill and they may be very rich people who feel they have to live in fortresses, but this is not the only house that's just coming around that. This is a landmark. It's a Mills Act. We have the power to either take away their Mills Act status or to demand that they cut the wall down to three feet. It's really outrageous what they have done. They never got a work permit from the HPC. They were not told they had to. That may be a staff mistake, but that doesn't matter. It still is illegal as far as what they did. Please, if you have not seen it, go up to Palomar Lane and take a look. You will be shocked. So, that has to do with landmark status, but I'm also very concerned. My old house at 707 Cuama now has a fence on it, it must be five feet tall, in the front yard. It's wood, you can see through it, but it's the front fence and it's not three feet. A house about two doors down, probably at 713 Cuama, now has a rock wall all coming up. What is going on? I know that you're thinking of doing neighborhood and planning and that will come in time, but what I see happening immediately is that the arbalata and the foothill region, which probably is because they're wealthy areas, have people coming from who knows where, where they think they have to, I don't know, hide from the public or put up fences and electronic gates because the crime rate is very high, which I don't believe is the case. Has the crime rate gone crazy in this neighborhood in Ojai? I mean, I have no idea why they think they can do this, but it is a terrible trend. I refer back to many years ago when I got active in city government because the housing, the condominiums on Montgomery Street, Los Arboles, wanted to make it a gated community. And we felt it was a terrible thing for our community. This is not what we want Ojai to become. We're not Montecito. I really urge you to take action as soon as possible on looking at the fences that are going up in the front of the arbalata and the foothill region and demand that this Libby Number 19, they have two choices. They can take the wall down to three feet or they could lose their Mills Act property. But it's outrageous what they've done. If you haven't seen it, please go ahead and see it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to defer back to staff and I'm going to ask a couple of questions. I mean, there's a lot of information out there and I want to make sure that we don't try to, I guess, make more work when it doesn't need to be discussed here and right now. I think that has to go down to HPC's as informational item and if they haven't seen the Mills Acts or they need answered questions answered specifically, I want to make sure that they get those answers. I don't know if right now is the appropriate time for it, but I do want to make sure that we get a, I guess, I want to ask our interim city attorney if he's had a chance to review the documents or that Mr. Fletcher review.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the only thing I've had an opportunity to review is the material you have before you in your packet tonight.
Okay.
None of the other documents that have been referred to this evening.
Because I want to make sure that when we answer these questions, we answer them clearly because there's reference to two other situations. One on across the street from this landmark where there was a work permit requested and it went through the HPC and they were denied for similar situation. Now, I do vaguely remember that the agreement was different from either one, so I want to make sure that we give the opportunity for staff to review that and to give a clear answer why it's different or if there is some action that we need to take as a city that we do it. And also, there is also reference to, I'm drawing a blank now, another landmark having to do with, I guess, Mr. Walker or, now I'm drawing a blank, but it had to do with, I'm sorry, had to do with, I guess, the agreement. Let me take a moment to just regroup my thoughts because...
While you do that, I would like to ask Mr. Walker something.
Yes.
What do you think about? Mr. Walker?
Mr. Walker, I would like you to give the city clerk the Secretary of State standards because I'd like to have a copy of that if you'd be so kind.
I guess the other comment that I wanted to make sure that they got a clear answer was the...is our...the ability to enforce walls...or no, I take that back. Okay, so it has to do with the second item that's coming up before us, the second bookstore, where in that clause, we have clearly stated that alterations that are landmark, that are marked landmark, only need to come to HPC, and anything else that needs to be modified in that building doesn't need to go through the HPC. So to me, there's two contradicting statements there where it says that in, for example, in this landmark, Number 18, everything should be reviewed even though it's not specific to a characteristic of that agreement. And so I guess that needs to be cleared up in my point of view because it's confusing. So through the Mills Acts or through the historical preservation designation, does it...do we need to be specific in what we landmark and what has to come through the HPC, what the property owner has to do? I guess, am I making myself clear? Yeah?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think what you're indicating, Mr. Mayor, is that this is one of those areas where I think an H, the Historic Preservation Commission Subcommittee, working with legal counsel, can work on providing amendments to the ordinance which make it clear because I think you've pointed out some of the possible flaws with the interplay between the ordinance, the landmarking contract, and even perhaps the Mills Act. Because you can easily have a property that's designated for landmark, such as in this case, where the language of the agreement provides that only certain areas are landmarked, and the argument then becomes those that aren't specifically referenced as the areas that qualify for...that qualify the property for landmarking status would be exempt from further review, whereas there's an interpretation that the ordinance provides that anything, any change that might affect that property at all would have to come before it. So I think there may be some conflicts that need to be reviewed, and I think it's a perfect example of where the Historic Preservation Commission, this subcommittee, working with legal counsel and staff, can start bringing some clarity to that.
And I think that's a fair start to begin with because I'm hearing a lot of back and forth whether they have the right to look at everything and which is curious to me. Like I said before, this item that's coming before us specifically exempts certain features in the building that doesn't need to come before their historical preservation commission. So I think I do, and I am gonna open it up first to council to see if there's any more questions or comments or future direction.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of comments. One, I think that discussion, I hope, is it possible that that discussion can begin at the next HPC meeting, or is that not possible?
And that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Wirework, that may be pushing the envelope a bit on our agenda.
Okay. Because I think it's a very important issue, as you mentioned, the interplay between attribute designation and future review, and even to the extent to which the attribute designation is important for how those future reviews happen is also important. And I think we're all having a learning curve here about how we have to be extremely careful for how these landmark agreements are drafted. It's very important that a lot of care be given to them. And...but I think there's more to this issue than that, and these are policy matters. And I think councilperson Smith, former councilperson Smith, has highlighted one of them. We have a community-wide problem with our code, and this was highlighted and it was council direction given to it relative to the issue of heights of fences and walls along right-of-ways. Our current code limits three feet only on frontages, not right-of-ways. So you have a situation where large corner lots with largely traveled streets, where you can have a three-foot in the front and a six-foot on the side, which I don't think is the intent of this community or the sense of what we want in this community in terms of allowing a degree of fortress construction that we don't want along right-of-ways. And I think this whole issue, if you think about it, would not have been an issue at all if our code had been what I think is what the public is looking for or expecting, and that's never, in my opinion, personal, individual opinion, nevertheless, that fences and walls should be no more than three feet along public right-of-ways, not just frontages. This is where we got into trouble at 11:05. We got into trouble with other issues. Former councilperson Smith has highlighted some other issues. And therefore, I think this is another layer of issue beyond just the historic landmark situation. And I think that perhaps we need to look to staff to think about an urgency ordinance targeted on this three-foot issue. I was looking at the code, and it looked to me like all we had to do is change the word "frontage" to "right-of-way." And we've solved all kinds of problems in terms of being more clearly within the intent of what we want to see in this community, which is not getting into a fortress Montecito look everywhere in the community, not just in the Arbola, but everywhere. So I just want to point out that that's another layer here, and we would maybe not even have this discussion if we hadn't had what I think is a defect in the code relative to public expectations on the three-foot maximum. People don't realize that frontages can be defined as a very small part of the public right-of-way exposure, and then the most of the public right-of-way exposure could be six feet. That's not, I don't think, what the public is expecting or what we think is the intent of the code. So that's...I just want to make that point. I think we need to really move on that as expeditiously as we can. And the other thing is, I'm hoping that as I read the report, and I understand the staff's position, I'm waiting to hear...I certainly hope that if there is a written opinion from Mr. Fletcher, that it's found and distributed as soon as possible for everyone to start looking at, especially the HPC. But if it's true that that wall is more than seven feet, and I believe also that the report mentioned that they exceed the three feet that's allowed at a driveway entrance for line of sight, that that's a violation, that, you know, and then that work would have to go back to HPC. I believe I saw that on the staff report. Again, something for the compliance officer to be looking at that we've just hired. Are we...are fences going up more than three feet on a frontage without the proper setbacks? Are we having the proper driveway line of sights, et cetera, et cetera? So I just wanted to just kind of step in here and point out that we've got multiple issues that have been exposed by this entire experience that we need to learn from and act on.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There is more than one issue, you're right. One is the policy and how things are being done, but also it's the question that Mr. Walker and Terrence and former councilwoman Smith mentioned is the wall that is in existence right now. So there's two issues here. I think we're gonna address these policy issues and get them cleaned up, but we also have a problem right now with this wall immediately. They put a wall up without a permit, period. It violates...I don't understand why it didn't violate the historic designation requirements. I really am not clear as to why it's believed that it's not in violation. As a matter of fact, on the April 10th, 2014, staff report on page one, Attachment A, page 1 of 4, 1-03...Heather Wallstein stated on the second page, 104, however, because this property is a landmark and the wall in question could potentially require variance from the planning commission for height, it would then also require a work permission from the HPC. Yet apparently, that never happened. So I agree we need to deal with the policy, but we also need to deal with this. How...we are having this happen repeatedly. People go rogue. They do something without a permit, and then we say, oh, well, it's already up, and then we let it go. And we can't continue to have this happen. I really feel strongly that we need to deal with this issue, and I want to know why these people are being allowed to leave the wall up and if indeed it is not in violation of the landmark property agreement. As stated on page 1-101, on the page one of the administrative report, after review with the city attorney, it was determined that the wall was not a violation of the landmark property agreement. I want to know how that determination was reached. Mr. Walker's report is very thorough. I would like to have a response to what he has said by our city attorney to see if it's accurate, you know, in all due respect. And I want to know why this is...why this is being considered acceptable. That's all I have to say.
Councilmember Haney?
Well, I don't want to get on anyone's bad side, but I'm kind of...
Well, don't be upset. Sit up here, man.
No, I'm just, you know, I like to preface my arguments, but you know, I'm kind of an owner's rights advocate, too. I mean, I understand we got issues with walls here, but we also have rights of owners here. So before we act excessively or imprudently, I think we need to think these issues through clearly. So that's talking about walls in general. This particular wall, I think, the first thing that I see is there's a conflict in the agreement. Part of the agreement states right off the bat that you can change, you know, you can't change the doors, you can't change windows, door openings to the main house, windows. I think that's it. And then the overall ruling says you can't do anything to the property in general. So the conflict is, what's the rule? And this isn't the first...and this isn't the first time we've had this. You know, I've been on this council for three months, and I think this is the third or fourth issue that we've had with clarity regarding our landmarked properties. So I'd like to see us not just review this one and not just act on this one, and we do have to take some action. But I'd like to see us start reviewing all of them, and I'd like to see us make an effort to go back to the owners of these properties and give some clarity as to what they can and what they can't do and what the expectations of their landmarking are. I'd like to see...and that's something that we can do immediately. That's a short-term, quick, we can hop on that. And then we can deal with the other issues of how walls are built or where walls are constructed and methodologies. But this is like the fourth issue that we've had regarding clarity as to what are my rights as an owner and what are the rights that the city is placing on me, and I think we need some clarity.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? Councilmember Clark?
With all due respect, I agree about property rights, but these people have a Mills Act designation, and with that, they have made an agreement...
No, I understand that, and again, I just, I stated that in general for fences and walls and things of that nature. I do understand this, and I do understand that they have obligations.
Right.
However, what I'm saying is, when was the last time that was reviewed? And when was the last time that anyone has talked to any of these owners regarding what their responsibilities are? And I just don't think we've done that, and I think that that's something that we can do. Betsy, that's all I'm saying.
It's not our job. They have the agreement. They've signed on to the agreement. They should have it in their files. They should review it. They should know what their agreements are.
And before we get this...I think it's gonna start off with the subcommittee, and I think our interim city attorney did suggest and recommend that we do team up with the HPC and start clarifying these issues because they are happening over and over again, and they do need to be clarified. So, yes, Mr. Clark?
So just for the sake of clarity, I want to share with you the takeaways I got from this, which are probably stated a little bit differently than you stated them. First, the code case on this particular item was closed, but I think it needs to be reopened. We need to do the technical measurements and all that kind of stuff and then have the legal review again. So we can do that, and then we can report back to the HPC if that's what you'd like us to do, or I guess whatever comes out of that review. So that's one item. Second item is that you've already given us direction to draft a potential moratorium ordinance, and we've been working on that language this last week, and we will have that ready for you to review and potentially adopt as an urgency ordinance at the next meeting. And there may be some options as to how you structure that because we're having trouble figuring out where to go with it, but I think the discussion tonight was...
That does with fences and walls in general.
Fences, walls, and hedges, and it could be citywide. It could be focused on a certain area. It could be just sidewalls and frontwalls. I mean, there's a number of policy choices that I think are built into that, but the point would be we would have the language there ready to go so that you can make policy decisions and then either choose to go forward with the moratorium or not. And then the other item was reviewing the existing regulations through the process that the city attorney described. The only other thing that I didn't mention but has been discussed a little bit is going back and looking at past landmark agreements and trying to interpret them better. I think that might be a bigger job than it would seem at first, so I'm thinking that that...maybe we do these first three things first, and then as a follow-on step, we can talk about going back.
Great. Any other comments? I do have...the commissioners do want to...if you could please come up and...I do want to be conscious to time, so if you keep...please keep your comments brief.
Mayor, can I just make one quick comment? Rob, if we're talking about city staff having to take the time to actually review these agreements, I might agree with you, but I'm thinking this is something that the Historic Preservation Committee could actually do. And it's a review, and it's an interaction. It's not a ruling, and it's not anything other than an interaction, and I think that that's something that they can do. It's a good board. It's a strong board, and it's a smart board.
Okay. Commissioner Hill?
Yes. I think that my question and why I posed it the way I did initially is that the HPC wants to know, especially in this case, wants to know when we get a chance to review and comment before it gets to it's approved and it's here before you. We think we should be...that's our job, is to provide you with information, and that's what we want to do. But we were totally left out of the loop in this, and it gets us here and gets everybody frustrated. So if you can figure out who goes first, who goes second, and what the resolution to this is, it'll be a lot easier.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Walker?
Maybe to answer a little confusion about the question of whether or not everything has to be...can't be done or has to be reviewed, I think there's certain things that are called out in the agreement and says, these are the things we want to preserve. Like in this landmark agreement, they said, we want to preserve the main house, we want to preserve the guest house, we want to preserve the property. And it said, specifically called out things that weren't supposed to be part of the landmark, such as the office, the swimming pool, and things like that. So it mentions certain buildings that wouldn't have to be reviewed.
Would you include the walls that the current...the rock walls that the current owners built?
That was not called out.
That was not...
But even so, even if they were to take the pool out and were to build something garish and didn't fit in, that would have...if there was some new construction that they were gonna build in place of that pool, that would need to come for review just so that we could all look at it. And we're not saying you can't do it. We're just saying we want to look at it and make sure it's compatible, that it follows these guidelines, which is like the massing, that it matches in the massing of the building, that it doesn't overshadow it. There's certain regulations that are guidelines that are in the Secretary of the Interior's that you just look at it, much as we do with the signs in the arcade, you know? We look to make sure they're compatible, but we don't say you can't build a sign or we can't...you can't have one. Normally, when you have a landmark such as this one, you landmark the whole property, and it's a 360-degree view of the building. It's the whole building as a unity. But sometimes there's situations where you only landmark the facade, and this was a case that we felt, the one with the twice-old tails, we felt that that was one that would not really matter if that back was landmarked, but the facade was what was important because that's what people see on the street. And in fact, usually when you have a historic district, it's only the facade that matters, what you see from the street. That's a little different from Mr. Libby's gatehouse where you want to look at the whole property and the environment. So we don't want to get too consistent. We want to leave some flexibility so we can landmark a facade when that's called for and then landmark the whole property if that's called.
Great. Well, thank you so much. There's a lot to do, and I just hope that we're able to clarify and develop a checklist and... a checklist and, and some guidance to the process so we don't keep seeing this issue come up. So I'm going to move on. Does anybody, do we want to... Yeah, we have M. Should we just approve both items later, or do we even approve them with this new direction?
We need to approve the information report?
It was a receiving file anyways, so there's no action.
Okay. So I'm going to move to letter M, and I do have somebody in the audience that pulled it, that wanted to pull this, Mr. Ulrich?
Mayor, before, before you take testimony, I just want to point out that this matter, a modification to this permit is before the Planning Commission and could potentially get appealed to the city council. And therefore, you need to be very careful that you don't get yourself in a position where you're not able to act on an appeal if it comes forward. If you have any questions about that, you should ask the city attorney right now to be clear what the rules of the road are.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So I'll open up to Mr. Ulrich.
William Ulrich, 47 Gridley Road. Since there is very little information on this, makes reference to receiving and filing report, my query is, does this zone change, the zone change that was based on the defective analysis, defective notice, and a misrepresentation of fact in the DRP, is specifically that there was no residential adjacent?
And I'll have our city attorney answer that for...
Well, I'm not sure what the question was.
Okay. There was apparently, in their initial application, that would be by the applicant, as well as by staff's analysis, as well as contained within notice that went out to the public, no reference, no mention to one of the properties.
Correct.
Being adjacent to what was allegedly a former M1 zoning changed to PL and surrounded by M1. It turned out it was not surrounded entirely exclusively by M1, but in fact, there was a residential lot adjacency, actual residence. So this whole thing sounds defective. So my question is, is that what this report is that's being, excuse me, received and filed?
Again, I'm not sure what the legal question is in there. You're asking...
Legal question is, is there inherently a defect, a defect in, in the entire application and reports?
I can't speak to whether there's a defect. And again, the report speaks for itself. If the question is whether or not there were defects in the notice, and were those defect, defects in the notice prejudicial to the point which means that that notice was ineffective and in violation of law, the answer to that is no. And that's not because of any interpretation. There's a government code provision 65010B that provides that any defects, irregularities, et cetera, in notice, and other problems, whether it be staff reports, information or otherwise, is, does not invalidate any action unless it can be shown that there is substantial injury created thereby and that there is prejudice, and that prejudice will not be presumed. It's a pretty high bar. In a case involving the city of Rialto, the court found defective notice, but found there was no prejudice. In addition, there's a statute of limitations problem, because this goes back now a number of years, as I understand it.
Okay. So it is, in fact, then, you did answer the question, that, that this report is being filed and received and filed with those defects inherent. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ulrich. Yes, and Councilmember Wyrick?
I don't think this, you stop me if I venture into territory I should not, I'm asking a process question alone. I think that's okay. I want to make sure that the Planning Commission has all the information associated with this report relative to the complaint, the quote-unquote "the complaint is valid," and just for their deliberations on the modification of the design review permit, I think it's certainly appropriate that they have all of that information in their deliberations.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Wyrick, definitely a fair statement, fair question.
Okay. So this, I certainly would expect that.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm going to start with the same thing. If I start going where I shouldn't go, stop me. So what I'm hearing is, if someone is asking for their property to be rezoned, and they make faults or inaccurate or misleading statements to have that zoning done, that there's no recourse for the people that are impacted by that action.
Mr. Mayor, member of council, Councilmember Haney? No. The answer to that is, is no. It's where during the process, there appear to be irregularities. I don't know, for example, if the applicant misrepresented anything here. I don't have those facts. What we have is a claim, and it may be accurate, that the notice that went out didn't accurately reflect the surrounding zones, residential in particular, that were adjacent to this property. That may be. But that would be considered the type of defect that the court would construe under 65010B as not being fatal to any action that was taken. There have been cases where you've got no notice at all, where the courts have said, you know, no notice is fatal and defective, and that is prejudicial. But in a case where you have a defect, where you leave out either one portion of maybe a surrounding zone or types of properties, that's where the courts actually have addressed it, particularly in the city of Rialto case, and said it's not prejudicial. It may be defective, but it's not prejudicial and doesn't invalidate the action taken.
Okay. All right, that's all.
Any other questions from the public?
I have a question.
Yes. If you could come up to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name is Linda Epstein-Clark. I live at 520 Buckboard, and it is my property in which there is, there were no designations, zoning designations, nor were there any general plan designations referring to any R04 Persimmon Hill, in which there are 67, or 47 houses. No one was, the project that was started, no one received notice until the same time, which was November 14th of 2014. That was the first notice that was received. There is no reference to those properties anywhere except one place. They do not exist on your tables anywhere in any of it, but they do exist in a written obscure form on the second page of a document written by Abe Lieber. And that was the original document written by the city staff. So for a project and all of these CUPs and line-lot adjustments and issues that went forward, and 30, 20, 35 tower lights, and all of this up against very restrictive zoning, it seems to me that the city should know exactly where they are, where Persimmon Hill is in relationship to the athletic club, since it's adjacent to that. And there are two tennis courts that sit directly adjacent to this R4 property that are clay, and they have no lights. That was done in consideration for the fact that there are homes sitting at the top of a hill, right there. And if staff in 2011 had walked the walk and done due diligence, they would have had to have seen these homes, because you cannot go north, south, east, or west without walking by them. So I do not believe that due diligence was done. So the fact that we all did not receive notice at the same time, and then four years later, we all received notice once at the same time. So my feeling is that there has been, it's not easy to be able to get a huge process like this Wild Tennis Academy through as a, and he is used, it appears that he is using Ojai as a Hollywood backdrop to proliferate his nonprofit organization. And we live here, and we want to see the mountains. And right now, I am seeing poles stuck in the ground. I have no idea how tall they are. Nobody has come out to, staff has come out, but there is absolutely no elevation shown, no height to the poles, none, none of the compliance that was due. Additionally, we were told in our decibel, low, very low decibel area of the R04 zoning, which is between 40 and 50 unsustainable decibels, that a tennis tournament is 130. 90 decibels can damage ears. So you have a hazard possibly as well. So for you or for anyone to say that your notice is good when it is not good, and there are many people in this community, and this is not the only issue, that is at hand, met with 15 or 20 people two weeks ago in another location away from City Hall, to hear about how no one received notice on various things, the cell tower placement, the change in direction of lanes. There is no notice given. That removes our right to come forward and to speak. And you silence these people, myself included, when you say that notice was effectively given, and I'm telling you that the mail, or putting it in a mail container, is not effective notice.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Epstein.
Epstein. Thank you.
I do, I do, and I don't want to, I want to make sure, because it could potentially come to us in an appeal, whichever party comes, but I do want to make sure that we answer the public's request, however we get it. I'd like to just echo what Councilmember Wyrick said, is just make sure that we get the Planning Commission all the material and needs, and answers also all the questions from the public, including noticing what is valid, what is not, and then also this, the code that you just mentioned, how that all fits in. I just want to make sure that we do prepare this staff report really well, and we get it out early so the public could view it. I'm going to, Rhonda, do we need a vote on these two items, a motion? Okay, so we just, receive and file report. I'm going to move on to our second, to our agenda, item number two. It's the miscellaneous permit 14-14, historical landmark designation for the Twice Sold Tales bookstore located at 121 East Ojai Avenue, accessor parcel, accessor parcel number 023-0-077-080, continued from February 24th, 2015. And I'll turn it to staff for staff report.
And Diana Gould will be making this report.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, members of the public. The item that's before the city council tonight is the landmarking of Twice Sold Tales bookstore. You've heard some comments from the audience already regarding some issues surrounding landmarks. However, I wanted to give you a summary that pertains directly to this project this evening. As you know, this item was continued from your last, from your council meeting with the direction to staff and the legal team to work with the applicant, to come up with something that would really effectively get at the, get at a couple of things which are highlighted in your staff report. Number one is to move forward with the project approval and completion through the building permit stage, while at the same time respecting HPC's role in the project in terms of considering the historic elements of the project. Also incumbent in your decision was the need to avoid a round robin series of meetings where the applicant would have to go back and forth between the council, the HPC, and the Planning Commission, thereby really delaying the process. What started this process was that back in December, the HPC had recommended to the city council approval of landmarking of Twice Sold Tales. After that approval was, was moving forward, the applicant decided that they wanted to request a removal of the landmark application. This was something that you heard at your council at the last meeting. And the architect is here in the audience tonight, if you wish to call upon him after, after I have the chance to finish the staff report. Because of the request to remove the landmark application, it was the direction of your council for, for staff, the, the legal team, and the applicant, to try to come up with something that would, that would still be able to landmark the project, but get at the needs of the applicant, too, which is to move the process forward in a timely manner. So working with the legal team, Matt Summers, the interim assistant city attorney, the community director, development director, and myself, we met with some representatives of the Friends of the Library Board, and also Commissioner Walker, and came up with several recommendations that are presented in your staff report on pages two and three. The most important of these recommendations is the following, that the landmark designation is effective upon the earlier of the following two dates, either October the 1st, 2015, or the day after the city receives a building permit for the reconstruction of the Pergola and the related project, as approved by the variance in the design review permit that was heard by the Planning Commission on February 18th, 2015. There is a resolution that reflects not only that, but the, the other three items, and that's, that's attachment A of your staff report. We do have one modification to the staff report, to the resolution, that Mr. Lambert alluded to when he came up and spoke earlier on. And if you look at page two of the attachment, you'll see under condition number three, there is a red line and strikeout, and we are recommending that the council consider the following for item number three, and that is, due to the specific areas nominated for landmarking, no restrictions are imposed on permitted uses, special uses, height and area regulations, floor area or parking regulations. What staff is proposing to add with the council's approval is, once the proposed landmark designation is effective, all proposed signage shall be subject to review by the Historic Preservation Commission, consistent with the purpose and provisions of Ojai Municipal Code, Title 10, Chapter 2, Article 16, sign standards. These conditions that we're recommending, the revisions to further clarify the conditions, so hopefully it will be easier for the applicant to know how they need to move forward with any proposed signage they may wish to include on the building in the future. So that concludes my report, and I'd be glad to take any questions from the council.
Any questions from the council? Any comments?
A comment, I just want to give credit where credit is due. I think the team that, that worked on this reflected the council's intent brilliantly. I think it's well crafted. I appreciate the attention to detail in the last modification that was done, and I'm just, I hope we move forward to approval. I want to give a lot of credit where credit is due on this matter.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? I do have a speaker's card. Mr. Walker?
Mr. Mayor, I'd, I'd ask that you open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing. And, Mr. Walker?
Nothing specific at this time. I would just reflect what Mr. Wyrick said, that it was a great process, and I really appreciated working with that.
So, so the people in, on, in, out there have the privilege, I'm just going to repeat what you just said, that you just echoed Councilmember Wyrick's remarks, so they know what you said. And likewise, just want to, I looked at the policy, made sure it was clear, problems that we've had in the past, want to make sure that they wouldn't come up again, and they seemed to be clearly stated, concise, and both parties are agreeing to this, which really makes it wonderful. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'm a, I'll move passage of resolution, the city council, the city of Ojai, approving a landmark designation of Twice Sold Tales bookstore, a city of Ojai land, historic landmark number 21, located at 121 East Ojai Avenue, as amended March 10th.
And I'll second.
Clap?
Yes.
Wyrick?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, you can close the public hearing.
And I'll close the public hearing. Item number three, encroachment permit insurance limits. Item number three, encroachment permit insurance limits. Prefer the staffer report.
Mr. Grant will be addressing this.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Yes, this is a public hearing to receive testimony from the public relative to a proposed increase in the liability insurance coverage required for public works encroachment permits. As a, as a brief background, existing, it's a relatively simple item. It's just the existing code only requires $500,000 of insurance, general liability insurance, $300,000 in some instances, and the proposal is to come up to the current standard of the JPI requirements, if $1 million per occurrence and $2 million general aggregate. So it's a relatively simple change. It's just bringing a 1990 code up to the current standards. 1990 seems like, it wasn't that long ago, but it was 25 years ago. Things have changed.
[laughing]
And that's the, I think that's probably enough to cover what I'm talking about. Any questions?
Were these G, G, CGPIA standards just updated? Or have they been in, in, in there, or they, have they been updated since the 90s, since we've looked at it?
I don't know the history of it, but I know it's been some time ago that the, it's fairly routine for agencies to go to million dollar coverage.
Okay. I'm just wondering, since the 90s, if CGPIA updated before that, and we just never...
I'm sure they did, right. I'm sure they did, and a lot of permits actually do require the million dollar coverage and $2 million aggregate. It's just, this is to formalize it in the, correctly through the code.
Okay. And it just says, another question, I know Councilmember Wierich wants to comment on the, but on section, on Attachment B 3-5, we do, you do show the red lines of what to include in the insurance limits. Would it be wise to include a performance bond? Or is that not appropriate?
The code does allow for performance bonds. It essentially never exercises such, somewhat difficult for a contractor or anybody else to exercise it, but there is an option in the code to provide a bond as well.
Okay, in the code, but not in this, not in the, or not in the municipal code?
This is only changing that specific section that refers to the liability insurance required.
Got it, thank you. Councilmember Wierich?
Yeah, quick question. The, I certainly understand that the six inch depth basically puts, like when you're doing street overlay projects and chipping off the top few inches of the street into an entirely different category. Are those insurance requirements up to date for that kind of work, for less than six inch work?
Yes, and we did review that with JPIA, and they have, the way the code was originally written was because there's a greater concern, obviously, as you go over six inches in depth, you might hit utilities and so on, a higher risk, gas, gas lines and so on. But, so really, it seems to be that commercial general liability standard is million dollars per occurrence and $2 million general aggregate, and that seems to be across the board for anything. Any commercial carrier organization has the million, $2 million coverage. I think any business would have it. So it appears to be that is the standard across the board.
Okay, and it's required in their code for a street overlay contractor?
It is for generally everything.
That's not an oversight, then, okay.
I think it came up as a comment before the meeting even, that, you know, what about special instances? For instance, I think the very few times we see a private party even request permits would be for a block party, for instance. There's one per year that asks for a block party, and they, I believe you go to your insurance company and you get a $50 charge for a one-time upgrade, depending on the policy. Some don't even charge it, and you get the million dollar coverage that's required for that instance. But it's fairly unusual, maybe an occasional encroachment permit for a driveway as well.
And so you handle a lot of the insurance requirements for overlay contractors, for example, in your, in the contract stipulations?
Exactly.
That you, that you issue.
Right, they can be unique in the contract, they don't follow code.
And you do that as well? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? When they open it to the public for any comment? Oh, I do have a speaker's card. Mr. Ulrich?
William Ulrich, 487 Gridley Road. While it's laudable, commendable, I appreciate that the city in this regard, regarding insurance limits are bringing things up to what has pretty been pretty much normative in the public sector for years. Over a year ago, I had this conversation with Mr. Clark and with Mr. Grant regarding, we continue to maintain the encroachment permits for corporate entities at a ridiculously low amount, an annual permit. Even if it went up by 100 or 200%, it is still not reflective of the scope of work, the number of operations that are done by these corporate entities, and on the corporate entities I'm referring to is Golden State Water, Casitas, Edison, the gas company, et cetera, anyone doing underground utility work. The reality of the situation at this point, and specifically relative to that, is the permit structure needs to reflect a per event, just as Mr. Grant just referenced, for the public. It's true, you can go and get your homeowner's policy to issue a additionally insured rider for the city's benefit. Well, it's my position that we can ask our utility companies to do the same darn thing, because as it is now, is my understanding also, we rely upon them for an honor system of, for reporting their work, which I'd asked a year ago for a listing of how often and how many, how much work Golden State had done, for example, how much Casitas had done, how much any of the utility companies, and I never got one. So unless somebody else has got that information, it would, I think it's worthy of knowing, because I think the city is leaving money on the table, as well as possibly exposed to some liability that he may not be aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ulrich. Yes, Mr. Grant, you may come up and answer those questions.
I just want to respond to that comment, and that it, we did take to heart and did take a look at our fee structure as part of something we've been intending to do. We did this year, it was already been approved, and that for encroachment permits on annual permits, there is now one annual permit fee which is charged to the utility company, and then there's a per utility, a per trench or excavation fee charged, whereas it used to be one fee covered the entire year. We do have, you know, it's an application, and it gives you the permit for the year, and every excavation you have, there's a separate fee which covers the inspection charges. And so we've, have that in force right now, and we're only allowed to recover the cost that it actually takes us to do the inspections, and it takes so on, for the cost recovery approach for the permit fees. So that's in force, and that there was, we did increase the standards on permits a couple of years ago, where we went to slurry backfill on all trenches. Instead of backfill, it can be hard to monitor at all times to make sure it was compacted properly, so we have slurry backfill. We also did not have T-sections in our cuts for our trenches, and now we have what's called a T-section. So when you come up to the top, you've got to grind outside of the trench for about a foot, and you do an overlay over that area, so it bridges that cut, so you won't see those dropped out trenches as commonly as you would before. So the standards are up, the permit fees are up, and we're doing the inspections on everything there.
Do you have a list of how many trenches?
Yes, we keep a table. I thought we've already talked about it before.
Yeah, I did, I did too, but if you could provide, Ms. Ulrich, that information, that would be great.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I'm going to take first question from Councilmember Randy, and then I'll come back to you.
I think the references, whenever they open a hole, they're pulling a permit. So we have a record of that.
Right, absolutely. It's required as part of the annual permit, that they notify us beforehand or immediately, as soon as possible during emergency, obviously they can't, if there's a blowout in the water line, to call us first.
Okay, great, thank you, Mr. Grant, and Ms. Ulrich.
Well, I'm glad to hear all of that. However, by way of an actual factual condition, right now, at 574 opposite, 574 and 605 Gridley Road, a Golden State contractor opened that up due to water seepage that I advised Mr. Clark about around the 1st of February. They opened it up, did a repair. I observed their operations, and it was not the safest thing, the way they, there was no traffic control. They closed it up, and it hasn't been capped yet. So it's been five weeks. At this point, it is a depressed patch, one of 32, in the section of Gridley Road between Ojai Avenue and Grand, and this is in the southbound lane. And if we're keeping such good records, I would imagine that they would need to, as part of an encroachment permit, have it signed off as being completed.
Thank you, Ms. Ulrich, and that is a good point. We just follow up on that, make sure that, again, we are following up our own procedures is really important. Any other comments from the public? Mr. Quilisi?
Thank you, Mayor Laura. I didn't know that the insurance limits were so low. I have a consulting business. I don't tear up streets, I don't build anything, I deliver opinions and reports, and I have to carry a minimum of $1 million in, in commercial general liability insurance. So it's, if the city's requirements aren't there now, they ought to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If no, then I'll close public hearing, and I'll turn it back to council for further questions or, or entertain a motion.
Well, I don't have any comments, but I'll try this as a motion, first, first one. I'm nervous. It's a pretty simple one, but do we start with reading the ordinance, an ordinance of the City Council?
No.
You read that.
Just do number two and three.
From this, from 3-1?
From 3-1. Conduct a public hearing.
Nope.
The second one.
Two, introduce an ordinance which amends the sections, section, section 7-1-107, insurance limits of the City of Ojai Municipal Code, and ask the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance, and approve a motion to waive further reading of the ordinance and pass to a second reading.
Second.
Roll call.
Ordinance number, or ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ojai, California, amending section 7-1.107 of the chapter insurance limits of the Ojai Municipal Code. Clap?
Yes.
Wierich?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes. Item number four, review of staff work plan. Turn it to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The mayor has led a couple sessions in January and February regarding City Council goals, and after the last review, we were directed to come back with a plan to address the goals that were discussed. So the, the general framework that we've been operating under for a number of years has been to keep our staffing levels lean, so that we can put the growth of TOT into the roads and other infrastructure. And I think that that's been an effective approach, but I just want to spend a little bit of time going over the results of that approach with you, because I think that we are both getting a lot of public works projects done, but we're also getting a lot of staff work done through the departments. So in, in the recent years since we adopted that approach, we did a million dollar paving job last year, we have another million dollar paving job coming up this year, we did the repairs to the museum, we did the recreation department upgrade, we built new restrooms at Sarzati Park, we did the Fulton Street extension that Mr. Hawks could not retire until we finished. We did the two bus shelters at the Y, we did the Libby Bowl and the shade structure associated with Libby Bowl, which was an add-on to that. We negotiated a new franchise, trash franchise, we adopted a new FEMA ordinance, and Mr. Grant has managed to come up with 15 grants to augment our capital improvement money that we set aside. Now, he gave me a much longer list, but these were the highlights. In, in the other departments in planning, we adopted a complete street policy, we adopted a plastic bag ban, we adopted a styrofoam ban, we adopted a solar height limit, we adopted a dark sky ordinance, we adopted a water wise landscaping ordinance, we adopted housing element number four, we adopted housing element number five, we implemented a second unit program and an ombudsman program, and we did an affordable housing overlay over the requisite number of parcels that we have to do. All of these are six, I say six-month projects, we didn't actually do any of them in six months, six to nine month projects or more, and, and I think the fact that we've done that with the lean staff is, is noteworthy. In, in the financial area, we approved the Ojai Tourism Improvement District so that we can better market the community. We completely reworked the transit fund so that we have better transit service and fees that cover those services, and no more fund imbalance. We got approval from the property owners in the Plaza Maintenance Assessment Area for five, 5% increases over five years. We reduced the Ojai day costs from a loss of over $30,000 to nearly break even. We've increased attendance in our classes, not just our leagues, but our classes in recreation, to the point where our revenues are about $50,000 over where they were before mid-year. We've gone to a five-day schedule at City Hall when we used to have a four-day. We've established an equipment replacement fund so that we can keep our employees productive with the proper equipment that they need. We've reduced retirement liabilities by changing the retiree benefits. We've reduced administration by eliminating one director position and one senior accountant position. We've successfully defended our RDA loan and are continuing to fight for now the interest, and we've increased our reserves from zero to 32% of the general fund. Again, those are just the highlights, but I think that the reason we're able to talk about a list by, like this, is because we've taken projects a few at a time, not all at once, and that's why this prioritizing of projects is so important. So in the staff report that I provided you today, there's several things that I provided. One is a list in no particular order, just the order that it came to me, of potential priorities, which are things that the council's talked about, that we'd like to do at some point in time. And then on page 4-2, under discussion, I listed those that I thought were the highest priority to do soon, meaning the next four months. It's not saying that we're not going to do the others, or that we're not going to work on the others as time permits, but it is saying that we will focus our efforts on whatever this list ends up being after the City Council has finished reviewing it tonight. So that's up for review. The second thing that has come up is that the amount of activity in planning has increased dramatically, and we have other big projects coming up. The hospital is planning a whole new building, there's a whole nother phase that's bigger than the first phase at the Ojai Valley Inn, and there's a number of infill projects and remodeling projects going on. So not only are we very busy in terms of projects, but we're also busy in terms of ongoing current planning work. Part of the result of that is that we've spent more money than we have in the budget. So part of what I'm recommending to you tonight is that you both increase the expenditures in the budget for planning and building, but also the revenues for planning and building, but not by as much. We've also consumed legal resources more than we had in the past, or more than we had budgeted. And in fact, I just learned from the interim city attorney that we had actually spent our retainer pretty much by mid-month in February. So I have suggested a couple of measures to better control legal expenses, and these are fairly common things that are done in other communities for the same purpose. On the staff side, what I did when Mr. Fletcher first started, before he was on retainer, is I acted as the gatekeeper. So whatever legal services were being requested, had to be requested through me, and I was able to make a decision as to whether it's something we really needed legal services for or not, and I was able to discuss that with the city attorney in terms of how much effort it would take to address. Also, we had drafted ordinances, resolutions, and agreements in a first draft basis at the staff level, and then provided that for review by the attorney, rather than having the attorney draft it from the get-go. And that's because it's, staff time's cheaper than attorney time. On the council side, what's fairly common in other communities is that, under the retainer, the city attorney is available to the council to attend meetings and respond to questions there, and also respond to questions over the phone, and with a little research that don't take more than an hour or two to respond to. But when an individual council member, or the council as a group, wants something that's going to take a considerable amount of research, and therefore a considerable amount of expense, in many cities, they require that an estimate be prepared as to how many hours and how much expense is involved, and then the council then either authorize it or not authorize it, but it'd be done as a group with cost control in mind. So there's really three things that I'm requesting that you address with this item. One is the priorities, what priorities you'd like us to be working on over the next four months. months. Two, the budget based on the various changes that we've observed. And three, the policy for controlling legal costs.
Any questions for Mr. Clark from council?
Relative to the pushing of increasing activity for the planning processes, everything associated with the CDD, where does the increase in budget, how does that relate to the recent contract with Site Specific as an outside contractor to supplement in-house or staff planning services? It was only $10,000.
Right. So most of it is going to be contract services. There's two kinds of work we do. One is trust fund work, which is work on projects where people are reimbursing us, and the other is work that's done in the general fund. And so we are having our contract staff work on both types and our permanent staff work on both types. And really, the increase has been in both types. So I'd say about half the increase is due to new projects that have come in that are paying their way, and half of it's due to general fund-type work, including staffing and the commissions.
Well, I was just wondering, kind of how, where Site Specific is coming in, in terms of how it's going to be plugged into the process with respect to existing staff work and other contract services? Are they going to be specializing in certain things?
So, yeah, so the staff person that we have from Site Specific is probably going to be doing most of her work off-site, and so a lot of that work is going to be preparing staff reports and analysis on trust fund projects.
Can I add to that, too? Rob, didn't we just, so we've hired code enforcement?
Yes.
A code enforcement officer? And is it Diane? I just wanted to get Diane's name right. Diana, we just brought on board, too, correct?
Right.
So that's alleviating some of these past, you know, if I go back six months, we didn't have Diana. We didn't have code enforcement. We had staff handling all of these responsibilities. So we've enhanced staffing levels already in planning, as well as have subcontracted additional work and responsibilities out. Am I correct?
That is correct, and that's why the additional expense.
Right. And it seems like someone said earlier that we're building again, so it seems like revenues are going to be coming in through a lot of these sources also. So staffing funds are obviously going to be increased, but revenue's also going to increase also.
So just to give you an example, you know, sometimes a project will come in, like there's a burger joint being built over on the corner of Montgomery, and that takes quite a bit of staff time, actually, but that's paid for through the trust fund. But then other things come along, like the M1 zoning. And although you'd think that that'd be fairly simple, you know, it's just a text change in the ordinance, there's a whole initial study that has to be done, and then the sequo process that goes, that you have to go through and the posting and so forth, and that's being done through consulting services. So that's what I'm saying, about half of it's based on projects and half of it's based on general fund activities that have just come along for whatever reason.
On question about expenditures, you mentioned that the code enforcement has increased our expenditures, but that was budgeted last year, right? So, no, it wasn't?
Yeah, code enforcement, what we had before is we had one person who served as building inspector and also code enforcement officer, and so by adding the 30-hour-per-week code enforcement, we increased the amount of.
Mike?
Thank you. We've increased the amount of code enforcement that we offer, and that's part of the cost here.
And that's the $58,000 for him, or?
Part of his cost, the costs in the building division have gone up, both because of the code enforcement and also because we had a huge project with a lot of overtime inspection going on at the end.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question on page four dash two. At the bottom, it says, "In addition, it is recommended that short-term actions be taken on the following items in order to allow time to address them more thoroughly next fiscal year." That's confusing to me, and if you go down to item five and item seven, the possible fence wall, hedge moratorium, and number seven, train, the code enforcement officer, and a focus on a couple of high-profile vacant buildings on Ojai Avenue. I don't understand what is meant by short-term actions to be taking in order to allow time to address them more thoroughly next fiscal year.
So, for example, with the...
I'm sorry. So, for example, with the hedges and walls, the short-term action is bringing forward the moratorium language at the next meeting. The long-term action is actually coming up with new standards for hedges, walls, and fences, which will occur sometime after a moratorium's adopted.
And what about the training the code enforcement officer?
So training the code enforcement officer is what we're doing right now, and also addressing just a couple of the vacant buildings is what we're doing right now. But the code enforcement will continue on after this, of course, when the training's done, and we'll be able to address more vacant buildings after these more high-profile ones are addressed first.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Yes, I mean, so another, I just have a lot of concerns as reading this staff report, and one of them is, I do appreciate, first of all, I do appreciate the work that you put in setting priorities and goals, and it's come a long way since we first introduced it in January. So it does, but my concern is here, we do have short-term priorities, which we, the highest priorities you're calling. I just, I would like to know if we know the next steps of every single one of these right now, or if the council could take some of these and provide clear direction or some direction, and would that help alleviate some of the workload on staff?
We know exactly what the work plan is for these items.
So you know the next step? Do you know the times are into these steps?
Some of them have, well, all, the goal is to do all of these things, the first seven and the second seven, between now and the end of June. Some of them have specific hearing dates that are at least tentatively set. For example, on the M1 zoning, that's going to go to Planning Commission on April 1st. And so, you know, we do have specific dates for items that need to be scheduled on a date-specific basis.
Okay. So that would help me, that, just to see the dates certens and the times and putting on the agenda, that would definitely help me. And that would allow also public input early on, instead of waiting till that, till a week or two weeks before posting it on that Planning Commission calendar. To me, that allows the public to look at our meeting agenda and say, oh, that's coming up. I want to make sure I attend there. I want to make sure, and that I provide some material prior to that meeting. So that would help me personally, and I think that would help the public, too.
Okay.
Any other?
Yeah, can I add to that? You know, I looked at your potential priority sheets, and I actually put on this that I'd like to see if we could do an ABC methodology of prioritizing tonight. A being might be some of the ones that you have on your one through seven, and B meaning probably one that you have in your secondary phase of one through seven. That's one thing that I'd like to do, is maybe go through that and all of us just talk about it. Give it an A, give it a B, give it a C. And then the other thing is, I'd like to know where we are on the completion factor of it. For instance, the cell tower. I think we have one more reading, and it's through. So we'd say that that's at 90%. And then the other thing that I'd like to do is, who's accountable for it? So, and we're not going to tell you, you're going to tell us. Is that a planning director? Is that a public works director? Is that a assistant general, assistant city manager? But I'd kind of like to know who's accountable for finishing these projects and getting them done in a timely manner. That's what I'd like to do.
Any other comments from council on that?
You know I'd have something. Two comments. One is, I want to be very careful on the legal services guidelines. I certainly would never want to be in a position where the council as a whole is here at a meeting. We see something that we really think needs to have legal addressing, you know, addressing a legal issue, and I said, well, you have to wait till next meeting when we get an estimate for those services. The way it reads is, council, individual council members, our council as a whole may request services within the scope of a retainer that city attorney will be instructed to notify if the services will exceed the retainer and to provide an estimate of the cost. I think we need to delineate between council as a whole requesting something to be addressed on a urgency basis from the attorney and not necessarily wait till the next meeting for an estimate of that as opposed to an individual request. I think we just need to be careful with that in terms of the language. And second of all, left out of this legal services matter is the issue of commissions. The commissions, you know, as, you know, we're the appointing authority for the commissions. They're an extension of the council, basically, and they require legal questions as well. So how do we, I think there needs to be some thought as to what the procedures are when commissions have a legal question. Should that go through the chair of the council, or should it go through the liaison, or how would we handle that? I think that's left out of this discussion and needs to, we need some thought on that.
Well, I think that was addressed early on by Mr. Clark when he said that he would be the gatekeeper for that, and I'd have no issues at all for any of the commissioners going through Mr. Clark to have the opportunity for one-on-one with our city attorney.
And I disagree. I disagree, too. And the reason why, being, I do agree with council member Wyrick saying that the commission is an extension of the council, and I think it would be appropriate for us to set some protocols, and it, either through, be through the chair, through the mayor, or through some guidelines that the council as a whole, which I prefer, discuss in order for it to be filtered. I think that's appropriate method to do it.
Okay, I'll agree. I agree to that, other than, is Mr. Daddy here? Because Bob would be the only one that we'd have to put a leash on, as far as how many minutes he'll actually get with a city attorney. No, I'm joking.
I don't think anyone's saying, I don't think anyone's saying no leash.
Council member Clark.
Who puts the leash on?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I've had experience with attorneys, unfortunately, being in my own business, and I've been through a couple of hair-raising incidences, having, requiring legal counsel, and the clock starts ticking, and it's amazing how quick it mounts. So I think we do have to have real strict guidelines about contact with the city attorney. There should not be direct, I don't believe it should be direct contact, because I think it's too easy when you're not wanting to cut the check for the attorney to get kind of lost up in the conversation. The next thing you know, you've racked up, you know, a $500 tab for a phone call. And so I think it's really important that there is some sort of protocols established. And I don't want to waste his time.
Definitely, and I definitely agree with you, and I think where I could agree with council member Haney is that we need to start hashing these items out and knowing who's involved, and also with council member Wyrick, something missing is the commissions, where they fit in into these. If there's already a work plan on these items done by staff, it would be good to get a report on each of those items, how they're going to be handled, so that if the commission does have a question, we could see, we could provide that information beforehand, because in my point of view, we're sending them, we're itemizing these items, we're sending them to commissions, then they're coming up with more questions, and a lot of time they have to do with our legal questions. I think by us really identifying and structuring them to a certain extent would allow us that future interaction between commissions and city attorneys, or council and city attorney, or whatever it is, it would define a clearer vision in my point of view.
Am I understanding, Mr. Mayor, if I may, am I understanding that you're saying that you want staff to tell us their exact work plan and who's going to be accountable?
I think to a certain extent, that would be good for us to know the process of every, for example...
That's the city manager's job. And to have him, you know, we talked about, we talk about staff time and how important it is, and how we need to not overwork our staff, and we have hired the city manager to manage the projects and to manage the city, and to have him to sit down and give us that information is a waste of his time. If we don't have confidence in the city manager, then we need to go back in closed session to decide whether we want to have him continue to operate as the city manager of our city. And if we don't have confidence, then we replace him with someone else. But we need to have confidence that he's going to set a work plan and he's going to get the job done. But to suggest that we need to micromanage this is an insult to him, and it's an unnecessary workload to him, and we need to step back and let him do his job.
And I disagree with that. I think that we're not micromanaging him, and we're allowing for items to be presented and be on the calendar, and I'm not saying that every item needs to be, there needs to be recommendations from staff. I'm not saying that. I'm saying that there has to be some kind of steps that we're going to handle, how we're going to handle each of these items. For example, budget.
That's his job.
But it comes before the council at certain times.
With all due respect, we're telling him what the priorities are, and it's his job to get them done. If he doesn't get them done, then we have to deal with that. But to have, but you're talking about micromanaging, and that's inappropriate. We have, we have to, we have the respect to the city manager to do his job, and we have to step back and let him do it. And I think it's an insult to him to micromanage him on that level. We need to decide what it is we need to have done. We need to direct him to do it, and then if he doesn't perform, then we deal with that.
And I simply disagree with that process. I really think that we could add more value to setting up a framework to these items, and I think that by us doing that, this will allow us to do. But again, it's a debate for council to have, and I think it's a fair one for everybody to add their input.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, if I agree with you, we would both be wrong.
Any comments from other council? Yes, council member Wyrick.
Not on that particular debate, but I did, I did have a second part to my general comment that began with the commissions, and that is that I spent the afternoon thinking about all of this and trying to, you know, as an individual council person, how would I would think of priorities. And I apologize, but I actually have a handout about my thinking on this that I'd like to pass out as an aid to discussion, and then I'll go over it really quickly. And it's just a way of telling you what I'm thinking, and here it is, and...
Wait a minute, I think you gave me something.
Yeah, I did. Wrong.
Did you have enough of these to put on there?
Yes, there was a, you can go over there with a couple. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't want to make a massive number on my own. But it's nothing official, it's just my thinking. And it was kind of prompted, frankly, by the listing of the M1 issue, and no offense, Rob, I just, you know, it's just a way of thinking about this, I'm trying to clarify my thinking. When we call the M1 zone issue something new, it's not really new. You know, it just occurred to me, it's not really new, it's actually a problem that's decades old.
Sure.
That we're having to address. And so what I was thinking, instead of trying to have a long, how am I going, how to think about ABC? That's what, you know, I think it dovetails with what councilman Haney was saying. How do we think about what's important, what do we need to put available time on and whatnot? And the taxonomy that I came up with, I just in my handout, I'll read, because I'm not trying to hide anything, I'm just an aid to discussion, was we have, I was thinking of three categories. First category is things that are performance deadlines imposed by outside agencies or current code deadlines. You've got to get the budget done. You have to respond to the new FCC rules. We got a sheriff's contract update coming, an animal control services contract coming. If we don't, if we want to loo, want to continue to have some privilege of input into those processes, we're pretty much bound by that outside timetable. So I think those are the highest priorities. The second priority is anything that's an outstanding code enforcement or compliance issue, like the M1 zoning matter, like the CDD intake forms, the, I'm copying some of the city manager's points, the compliance officer procedures. Those are all existing enforcement moratoriums or suspensions. Those are like a next category. And then the third category is new initiatives. And it seems to me that if you think about these, they're the things you've got to do right now because of, you know, deadlines beyond your control, problems we have with the code in terms of enforcement and compliance that have been exposed or that we've been neglecting or procrastinating about as a council. And then the third thing is new initiatives. And it's not meant to be mutually exclusive, but the examples I gave is that I wouldn't want work in the city, in the community... want work in the city, in the community development department on neighborhood planning work to preempt work on fixing the M1 zoning issue, for example. Because that's something that's decades old, that's affecting people through no fault of their own, and we should, that should just be a priority. It doesn't mean that you can't do a step on the, on the M1 zoning issue and then do a step on neighborhood planning, but one shouldn't preempt the other. Another example I have is that if we're dealing with work on compliance procedures for solar access and lighting, that should never preempt getting the telecom public notice procedures finished. So I'm just, I was just trying to provide a taxonomy in terms of my thinking and expose to the council and staff and the public my thinking on how to think about each of these in terms of priorities.
So William, like minds, think alike. That's all I can say. But that's why I went into this priority. And then I want to get back to Betsy real quick, because I don't want to argue about this. All's, when I talk about who is assigned the responsibility, for me, it's just to support someone. It's not to go and do anything other than that. If that's a planning item that we're going to prioritize, then we know who's going to do it in planning. If it's a Greg's responsibility, it'll be a Greg responsibility. We're not asking any more than, than for someone to, for Mr. Clark to be able to say that and to say it briefly tonight, who's responsible for that. And it isn't going to hurt for any of them to know what their responsibilities are. And it isn't going to hurt anyone in the city to know what their responsibilities are. So it's not micromanaging, it's called transparency. It's called who's accountable for getting things done and getting done in a timely manner. And more importantly, to me, we bring things up and we're, and we discuss them, and then we drop the ball and we don't come back to them for two or three months. You know, we need to be able to come back and say, well, this was assigned to such and such. Is there any help? Do you need any help? Do you need any guidance? Do you need any additional information from us? Exactly what Mr. Lara was saying. And it's a tool to help, it's not a tool to hurt, it's not a tool to harm, and it's not a tool to micromanage. I, so that's where I disagree with you. I just don't think asking our city manager to tell us who, who is accountable or responsible for a specific task in the list that we're going to prioritize tonight, I don't think that's a bad thing. So.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, council member.
I think a time certain on finishing and report back as to percentage done, I think that's reasonable. But it's his job to delegate. I don't understand, I mean, clearly one, you know.
Well, when we're done tonight, we'll have a clear idea of what direction we want to give Mr. Clark. And then I just wanted to touch on one thing about the gatekeeper regarding the attorney's time. I think there's a lot of time that a commissioner might think that he needs to speak to the attorney, yet it might be something that he could speak to the city manager about. Or he actually could go to a department head. So that's, that's my, how I look at the gatekeeper. It's not to prevent or stop, it's to, again, provide information and, you know, you know, well, instead of going there, maybe you need to go here. And again, that's trusting our city manager to make that decision.
And I agree with that. That's a very good, that's a valid point. And then going back to Mr. Wyre's, council member Wyre's guidelines and work plan, it is a, I look at it, and I like how he categorizes, I guess, workload by staff. And it gives us a clearer idea of, to us, to me as a council member, how we could look at prioritizing certain items. Because in a way, I guess, in a way, what I'm saying is by putting, giving us an idea what the, of the workload that you're, that you have for this, and knowing what's mandatory, like the budget, would give me a clear idea of what we could really do. And you already have to do it. And, and some might call it macro-managing, some might call it just being clear and knowing where you're going. And I don't think it's, to me personally, I don't think it's bad. But if it's a pleasure of the council to not do that and, and just look at list and for you to follow up, if that's a priority of the council, then, then it is. But my personal preference is to identify exactly what needs to be done at certain times of year, and then what we could do, and who could do it. So I do, I think that in general, I think that the set priorities that you have on here are good and urgent, and we need to move on these. But what I would like to see is next steps and reports, and knowing and working and knowing when they're going to be presented and what time. To me, that, that seems valid, and I do like how council member Wyre categorizes some of the issues.
Well, there's also three sheets of priorities, guys.
Yeah, there is.
There's, I mean, there's 14 that we're looking at on four, too. But on one of, you know, on attachment A and one of three, one of two, and three of three, I mean, you know, it isn't going to take long to go through and put an A, B, C or on them. I mean, it should go pretty quick. And again, it's just information from Mr. Clark is going to help him to revise his list. And then I also wanted to throw something else on here. I call it the CBCM or SBCM, and I call it the standard business of the city manager. You know, there's just certain things in here, current planning, that's, you know, that's, that's Rob's role there. It comes down here to animal contract services, just like Mr. Wyre said. That's Mr. Clark's job. That's nothing new, that's not gonna, that's nothing special, that's what he does, that's what we pay him for. Budgeting, that's between him and the plant, and the accounting director. You know, I mean, there's just certain things that are going to be SBCM because they're Rob's jobs, they fall under his jurisdiction. So Betsy, that's what I was trying to say is, is when he says, well, you know, archaeological resources, well, who's that go to? Who's in charge of that? You know, I'd like to know who's accountable for that. Maybe we don't have someone, maybe, maybe that's a group, maybe that's, you know, that's what I'm saying. I'd like some clarity on who's roles and whose responsibilities are all these priorities are going to fall on, onto. That's all.
Does the council, I personally don't think that we need to go through every item and through the A, B, C. I think that if we categorize it and we know what Rob's going to do, like you, council member Haney did, the animal service contract, we put that under one category. I think that, and I don't know what the rest of the council thinks, but I think that he has a good list here. He just, I, we, I just wanted a little bit more information on how this is going, or what, what time certain, what dates you're going to give. I know that we want to do it in certain month, six months, but where are we going to fit that in that six-month process? How's that going to look? That's what I would request. Because I don't have an issue by the, the short-term priorities and the additional doing follow-up to next fiscal year. I don't know.
So I think, I think what you're asking for is timeframes and landmarks on those items that are listed on page four dash two.
Yes.
I can do that.
And then furthermore, categorize, just like Mr.
Your budget request of $47,172, is that for the balance of the fiscal year?
Yes.
Okay, which ends June?
30th.
June 30th.
Which, this is timed to the fiscal year, actually.
Right.
So my, you know, my thought is that these are the things that we need to finish up this fiscal year.
Well, my point, I don't want to interrupt you, but that's where there's an issue where you say next fiscal year for certain things like the M1.
So maybe I, I don't think, I don't think I was clear there. What I'm saying is that we're going to, is that these seven items under the, under that sentence are the short-term steps that we're going to take this fiscal year, but there's more to do next fiscal year.
Well, hopefully not on the M1.
Well, so that's a, that's a question that the council needs to answer. But we're, we're making a, we're moving forward quickly on a text amendment on the M1 to deal with the immediate issue, but there's still the issue of what is the community's vision for the M1 zone, which is a.
I agree.
Whether you want to do that next year or not is a question that you have to answer.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear about the time period for that. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry I interrupted you. You were kind of explaining how you want to proceed based on this input.
Yeah, what I was saying is.
Oh, that's fine.
So, so I, what I was coming to is I think we're going to have to set priorities again in June, and probably to some degree through the budget process. So if these are more or less acceptable for us to start heading forward on now, maybe the thing to do is to do the A, B, C, but do it individually and send it in to me, and then I can compile it and bring it back.
I like that. Maybe each of us just do our own listing rather than doing all that right now.
Yeah.
What do you think? Each of us, not necessarily my taxonomy, but anybody's.
I'm done. I mean, let's, let's, you know, also, I just want to touch on this. I have it actually on my, on the second page, it's called Get Her Done. You know, I don't want to keep coming back to this. We keep coming, but this is like the fourth meeting we've had on these priorities. Let's.
Well, maybe what, maybe.
Let's champion something tonight.
Maybe the mayor's suggestion's a good one, though. If we solicit everyone come, each of us turn in, remember, one council person's not here tonight. All of us put in our priorities, giving Mayor Blatt, former Mayor Blatt, you know, council person Blatt's a chance to get his input in. We turn that all into the mayor. Maybe there'll be consensus, and then we can focus on what there's not consensus on.
Great.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And I, and I, the reason why I think that it's, it's important for us to keep bringing this back is because some of these items have been in the pipeline for a while.
That's what I'm.
And I want to make sure that we're, we, we get through them and we do it the right way, and we try to deal with issues that are going to come up and be, be proactive instead of reactive. I just want, that's my goal. If I'm, if, if we're, if I'm doing it the wrong way, then I hope we could come to consensus as a council. But I want to just make sure that we give this the time and energy it really needs to make sure that we do champion items and we do get things done.
You know, I could move on if we have a consensus on how we're going to turn input into, give council person Blatt's a chance. Number two, I've been sitting here thinking about this budget request, and can I ask, would this money be taken away from any other purpose? Would we be transferring these funds from any other, the $47,172?
No. So, so the, the way I propose to handle that is that we have about $180,000 worth of income from the loan payment that we didn't include in the revenue estimate because we weren't sure about it, and so a portion of that would be eaten up by this.
Okay. Well, I'm going to make a motion to support staff in Get Her Done.
Yeah.
Right.
And I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion that we approve a net increase in the general fund contribution to these activities of $47,172 unless that's the inappropriate form to do it.
That's fine.
Okay.
Just before we do that, though, we, the other issue that we have is, is the attorney, the additional funds for attorneys. And would we be remiss if we didn't add additional funding at this time also to that?
It's included.
It is included in that 47?
So, so there's, there's $101,000 of expenditure, $30,000 of which is for legal services, some of which has already been spent, and $54,000 in additional revenues. So the net is 47.
All right.
And then are we okay with going through Rob as a gatekeeper to?
That's not what I'm recommending.
Or no?
So, so the recommendation for staff is that I be the gatekeeper. The recommendation for council is that if the work, in simple terms, if the work that you're requesting from the city attorney is outside of the retainer, we need to bring it back to the council and have a discussion.
Okay.
And we'll look at language for commissions.
Right.
Okay. So we're looking at language.
We have a motion on that.
Um, I just, well, I'd second that motion, because I did hear you. Do we need to take a vote on that?
Clap already seconded it.
Okay. Let's see, I wasn't listening, was I?
I have something to say after the vote.
Right.
Okay, ready?
Okay, roll call.
Clap?
Yes.
Wyre?
Aye.
Haney?
Yes.
Lara?
Yes.
Councilmember Clap?
I just quickly went through the potential priorities. I think one of the reasons that new was put by M1 is it's a new thing that has come forward to our attention that we're having to address, not that it hasn't been an ongoing problem. But I just went through quickly and scratched out the things that are already have to be done. Two, four, seven, eight, 11, 20, 21, 22, and 26. So I think we need to keep in mind when we're doing our A, B, C priority, that these are items that are already things we absolutely have to do. For example, the telecommunications ordinance, the new height standard, which is a part and parcel of the telecommunications ordinance, the animal services contract, the police contract, the budget, the historic prez ordinance is being taken care of by the HBC. We have to do the mandatory training. We have to do a RFP for building services, and we have to do an RFP for the city attorney. And the website development is already in process because we've already signed a contract to have it done. So I think we need to keep in mind that these are already things that have to be done.
Well, and along with that, that's why I asked for a percentage of completion, because the cell tower's at 90%. The RFP's already been written for the city attorney, so we're, we might be at 50% on that. That's, that's why that's going to help us to deter, that's why I, that's why I had wanted Mr. Clark to be able to give us some information tonight that would help us to identify the priorities based on what is and what isn't and what's coming up. And he, and he would know that, so.
Any other comments from council? No? And I'll move on. Item number five, enforcement of transient rental restrictions. Turn it over to staff.
So, so actually, this, this is a holdover from an item that council members Wyre and Clap brought forward in January. And there were two discussion items, but we only discussed one of them. And the one we discussed was working on vacation rental regulations, and so that their focus group has been put together and is moving forward. But the other question was, should we set a deadline by which we start enforcing against, I guess you'd say, abating the illegal transient rentals that are out there? So I turn that over to the authors.
Yeah, council member Wyre?
Yeah, I think when this, and Mr. Clark is right, this is how it was originally drafted. We only got around to discussing number one. And number one is in what, in process. And I think that council member Clap and I will have a further report on that at the next meeting. We'll have, at that point, three focus group meetings, and I think we'll have more to get to answer. Now, on number two, the reason that was added and the logic of it, and I think, let's discuss the logic and see whether it makes sense or not, is A, to have a sense of timeliness in terms of, you know, we're going to get this addressed this time, we're not just going to let it slide forever. And one way of doing that is to say, you know, we're going to have the moratorium gone by a certain time. The second point is to, I think, signal to the community that, I think, you know, incrementally that don't have an expectation of non-enforcement of, or some sort of regulation of vacation rentals as you're making decisions about what you want to do with residential properties, either investing in them or whatever. So just signaling that we're, we're moving in the direction of having, lifting the moratorium and having replacement regulations of some sort. So that was the logic of it, in terms of not having something immediately draconing on our onerous, but setting a timetable and a signal. And as I've thought about this, I thought that if, if that logic is persuasive, that it, we ought to set, think about a date that by resolution could be adopted, of course, easily to modify at any time by council majority, but maybe set it out something like, maybe 180 days or something like that. And 180 days, by the way, would be September 7th, 2015. I think that's 181 days. But I, I'm open to discussion on this, I just wanted to explain the thinking, for what it's worth.
Okay. I, I do want to comment on that logic. I mean, it seems to me that would be the smart thing to do. I think it would be good to, to let the community know that we will be lifting the moratorium and that. But my question is, is 60 days or 120 days more appropriate? Will that give you the, the time with this focus group to come up with, or to come back, not only report with what the three focus groups have, have said, but then do a public hearing?
Right.
Because that was our, our next step?
Public hearing and then drafting of ordinance changes and adopting ordinance, you know, that takes a while.
Yeah, that takes a while.
That's why I was thinking maybe 180 days now.
Yeah, because 60 days is, is just, it's coming up.
Too quick.
It's two months. I mean, it'll be before us. I mean, we might not even have a public, well, we, we'll probably have a public hearing, but.
And that, that's why I was suggesting maybe an alternative be 180 days, if we wanted to put a time on this.
I would, I would want to put a time to it. I would. I, I think that it's, we do need to move on it. Again, that's going to impact our other priorities. For June, it's going to be the next, next year's fiscal year's priorities. But I think to a certain extent, we do need to put some, some dates on there and put a timeframe. I don't know what councilmember Haney, and then I'll open up to the public.
My thoughts are, are, again, this is another one of those, it was brought up earlier this evening. This is another one of those actions that we take no action on. So, let's set a date and let's get it done. And the same thing with this second unit dwelling. You know, we, it's, you know, we keep putting things, pushing it down the road or kicking the can down the road, whatever the saying is. Let's set a date, let's get it done. I have no problem with 180 days.
And if, and if we think that, I don't know if, if councilmember Clap has any more input on this item, but if we think that we could do that in 180 days, have a public hearing, start with the changes, I think that I'm, I'd be open to 180 days.
So, so just, I, I think, I think there's a, there's a difference between how long it's going to take to put together an ordinance and get it, get it adopted, which, so the timeframe for that is that there's the whole sequo process. So, so you have to, you have to decide, you'll have to have some discussion after the focus group is done about what you want in the ordinance. Then we're going to have to probably draft up something for you to look at and either bless or change. Then we're going to have to do a sequo process on it. Then it's going to have to go to hearings before the planning commission, and then hearings before the city council. And there's, you know, the sequo process is probably at least 45 days. The planning commission, you can count on a month. The city council is two months. So, you know, I always say, it takes six months to change an ordinance, but we never do it in that amount of time. Having said that, just because you haven't adopted a new ordinance doesn't mean you can't start enforcing the current ordinance. So, so if you set a deadline, as you're talking about in September, you may not have a new ordinance on the books yet, but you'll at least have some basis upon which you can direct us to start enforcing.
Councilmember Clap?
One of my concerns is that people are making financial decisions based on our lack of enforcement. They're purchasing homes and, and we basically are turning a blind eye to this occurring. And I don't want that to continue on. And it does take a long time to draft and pass an ordinance, and it could drag beyond six months. I'm thinking that 90 days would be reasonable. At least, it's a very strong message that, that we are going to have an ordinance and that, and we need to, we need to make sure people stop making decisions, financial decisions, based on our lack of enforcement.
So, you're saying that 90 days to come revisit, revisit it and see?
I'd say 90 days would be an enforcement.
If, for the new ordinance or the old ordinance?
There's not an old ordinance. It's interesting. Could somebody explain this, please, Mr. Howard? Maybe you can explain, or Rob?
Yeah. So, in our zoning code, we have tables that list the permitted uses in each zone. And in the residential zones, transient rentals is not a permitted use, nothing like transient rentals. However, we have another section of the code that says if the planning commission makes a determination through a CUP-type hearing, that a use is no more detrimental than listed uses, they can permit it through that CUP. So, we have one that was approved back in 1985, where the planning commission made that determination. And today, if someone wanted to make an application for a transient rental and request a CUP, we would tell them, yes, you can make an application.
So, we would enforce that method. And you guys, I, to me, it seems like we're doing these focus groups, and then we're getting input from their, from the community. But in 90 days, we're not sure what that's going to look, but then we're going to enforce our current regulations. I, I don't know if we're, we're sending the right message. I know people, I, I do agree with you guys. I really do. I think that you guys are doing a very good job, listening and conducting these focus groups and taking it on. I commend you guys to do that. But I'm not sure if, if we're, we're sending the right messages, that we're, we're serious about it, but we're taking input, but then we're going to start enforcing our current regulations. Is that more?
I understand what you're saying. I'm, I'm thinking maybe we, we see if the public has some comments on this, and while we think about it.
Does the public have any comment?
Open the public hearing.
Yes. Ms. Hanson?
I think if we need to say we're opening a public hearing.
It's just a discussion item.
Oh, it's, oh, it's not an action item?
No, it's a discussion item.
It's actually listed as an action item.
It, it, action item is different than a public hearing. Public hearing is where you've actually set out.
Okay, I'm sorry. My, my mistake.
Yeah.
Ms. Hanson?
My mistake. I'm sorry.
Accept.
Bill Hanson, I live in the city. I totally agree with what councilwoman Clap was saying. We really need to get on it right away. There are people investing in it, putting their money down on something that thinks is going to be a great business plan, and it's ruining our community. You can't get a rental in this town. I don't know when the focus groups are going to be chosen or how, but I certainly want to be on one of them. And when I saw this on the agenda tonight, I thought, wow, they already made a decision. But I guess you really haven't yet. It's still yet to come. Okay. And I hope we do it as soon as it's feasible to do.
Do you have a thought on, on if there should be a, a date future?
Well, you know, I understand.
That we say, you know, there's going to be a date at which we?
As soon as we can do, as soon as we can do it, we should do it.
In terms of lifting the moratorium?
Yeah, because people are investing in this, thinking that they can go forward and buying property and, you know, and consideration for those folks. They need to know that they can't do that. And we need to make some strict rules about vacation rentals because they're detrimental to the community. They really are.
So, you think, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go for it.
So, it doesn't, you think it's, it's, it's not just a matter of passing a resolution with a date certain, it needs, it's important that that be a pretty tight date certain rather than a, just a date certain?
I think so. Yeah. Thank you.
And I just have a question, too, because in 90 days, if we do in 90 days, and we lift the moratorium, we start enforcing our regu, our current regulations on, on transient rentals. My only concern is, if we're taking public comment and then we change our mind in the future, is that going to, is that going to send a wrong message saying, what if we do decide to allow transient rentals in certain areas, or, or the community does see there's an appropriate in some residential and not others? Do you see there's an issue there, or that's not really an issue? It's more about sending that clear message that we are serious about enforcing transient rentals?
I think we need to send that, that message as best we can, as soon as we can. I really do. I mean, we don't know how it's going to turn out, but if those focus groups are made of the kind of folks I hope they are, we'll be pushing against that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw somebody else raise their hand. Sir Iker?
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor Lara and staff. I'll speak on behalf of the Visitors Bureau here tonight, not necessarily the chamber. The chamber board hasn't discussed this yet, so I'm not really on solid ground there. The Visitors Bureau is looking to the council to make a decision. They need something to be done. We know on, on a number of levels that this needs to be done. There's a lot of money being left on the table. If you allow them, then it's going to bring a lot more TOT into the town. You're going to increase your operating revenue. On the other hand, the Visitors Bureau is marketing this town as a community, and almost as a throwback community to the way things used to be, only they are still that way here now. And I do believe that if we drive out even more rental housing, precious little as there is right now, this community will not be what we're marketing. It will not have the same feel. We'll have fewer kids in school. We'll have fewer kids here, period, except in the private schools. And it will change the community, well, maybe not necessarily forever, because you can always change your mind. But it won't do for us what retaining what we have here now, which is diversity. And that's shrinking, too. Make no mistake about it. But that's what this town was built on. And it was built on people who worked for a painting contractor, who eventually gained their painting contractor's license. They started in Oakview or Miners Oaks and worked their way up to other places to live, bought a bigger house, and did all that kind of thing. And that's going to fall by the wayside if we turn this into, for lack of a better term, another Montecito, where all the workers move in during the day and move out at night, and the only people that are here are the ones behind the gates. And so, I think that the most important thing is to make a decision, stick with that decision until such a time as you've made a concrete, until you've done an in-depth investigation and had a lot of input from the community about what they want in terms of transient rentals or not. And if that is separate and different or opposing to what is currently on the books, then you change it. But I think you need to stand up and say, this is what the law is, and we're enforcing the law, before you bring in a new one. You have one on the books. You have something on the books you can utilize, so do so. And again, it, it doesn't matter if you make that change now or 90 days from now, but make that change, or rather, whether you enforce what's on the books now, or if you wait 60 or 90 days, but enforce it now. And if you change your mind six months down the road, then you will. But for now, to allow people to continue to make investments that we all, I can't say we all know, that may very well turn out to be faulty information, is not really right. It's not responsible on your part.
I, I do have a question for staff, because if we decide to, thank you, Mr. Iker, if we decide to enforce vacation rentals in 60 days, that means that every vacation rental that's out there, we're going to start asking if they went through their, their right regulations, right? Those 167 that right now we have, there could potentially be more. But that means that we're going to go and enforce our regulations on the 168 that are out there right now.
So, it's going to, it's going to take a little bit of work to figure out how many they are and where they are. So that, you know, we, we go to the websites, and you can't always tell whether they're in Ojai or not in Ojai, but you, we try to identify them. And when we do, we send them a cease and desist letter and go from there.
Any other comments from the public? Yeah, Mr. Quilisi?
Thank you, mayor, councilmembers. Is, is there a question about whether transient occupancy taxes are to be done uniformly or not uniformly, wherever, wherever they might be applied in the city? No?
I don't think.
I don't think so. So, the real question then is, where does the council wish to allow transient occupancy in the city? How could it take six months to decide that?
And, and I think we're, we're talking that we're, we have to come up with an ordinance that would allow that, and that takes.
Okay. Implementing a yes or no decision by, by zoning categories is something I would think that could be done relatively quickly. You have a couple of workshops or, or something, and you do it. Now, in, in terms of implementing an, an ordinance, if it comes to that, aren't you simply then going to apply the same rules to the people in the, in these new areas where you're allowing transient, transient occupancy? You're applying the same rules that are already on the books for others. And if that's the case, how hard can it be to draft an ordinance? Thank you.
I, I just wanted to touch on one thing. I already, you know, is regarding zoning, Mr. Quilisi. I always thought, I already thought we had one in a village mixed use. I thought we already had a place for these units. That's my take on it.
Councilmember Wyrick?
One answer on the question that's been raised by Mr. Quilisi is that it, there are issues of how to draft code amendments that would allow better enforceability. There, there, to, to give us enforcement tools. So, those are possible and very important issues that we might need to do in terms of looking at our ordinance changes. How to handle, if there's going to be, for example, a regulation allowing some, how you define what that limit would be in a tractable, enforceable manner. So, anything involving that would involve an ordinance change, and therefore it would take some time. However, listening to all of this, I'm prepared to go with councilperson Clap, depending on the sense of the other, of the rest of, of the council members in terms of, I think, listening to Mr. Clark and to the public, I think there's a good case to be made for just saying, 90 days from now, we're going to start enforcing. Or the moratorium will be lifted.
And, and I would just like to comment, too, after hearing the public comment, is I think in 90 days, it is doable to get a sense. I don't know if we will be able to have an ordinance in place, but I think 90 days will give us the ample time to, to see where our community stands. And if we're even going to allow them, even if we haven't figured it out in what zones, at least we get a consensus from the public saying, want to hear, this is successful, this is not, and we start, the 90 days will give us plenty of time. And, and I would, I would defer to you guys, because I think you guys are leading this item. And I think that if you guys feel comfortable with 90 days, I think I could support that.
Mr. Mayor, yes, I am comfortable with 90. I would be, I think that's a good idea. And a public workshop was mentioned by Mr. Quilisi. We're having a focus group right now of people from different segments of the population, different expertise, so to speak. But I think at the end of that, I think it may be a good idea to also have a citywide workshop as well to get community feedback. I think that's a real important part of, of the, of the picture.
A large group.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Because this is a huge decision. And it, and I don't believe it, it should really not benefit by the input from the public. So, I, I don't know when to schedule that, how we would go about doing that. Maybe.
I think we decide that next meeting?
Yeah, maybe the next meeting. Yeah. And we've met twice already. We're going to be meeting a third time. I think after the third meeting, we're going to start having a real, probably, hopefully, a real clear picture of, of where the focus group is coming from. And then from there, we would go to a citywide focus, focus group or workshop.
And it sounds like there's a process here that you guys are taking, and then where it seems like, once it gets to the public, the whole community being invited, I think that's when it would trigger staff participation. And I think that, again, it would be something to bring up next meeting to make sure that Mr. Clark understands what, what the timeline is.
And also, something really important to understand, this, we'll, we'll report what the focus group said. We're, we're not coming back with a suggested policy.
Yes.
We're coming back with a report about what the focus group said. Maybe just a list. It could be a myriad of conflicting, you know, opinions. But we're going to come back with a report, but not come back with a suggested ordinance. That would be premature. Am I, am I speaking out of turn here?
Yes. No, that's absolutely right. And, and with that, I'm going to make a motion of interest of time, that the city council directs that the moratorium, action of the existing council moratorium be lifted or ended 90 days from today.
Second?
Roll call.
Clap?
Mr. Howard.
Thank you for catching. I could have done it afterwards. Just so the record is clear, Mr. Mayor, members of council, there was never a formal moratorium adopted by resolution of the council. It appears in the council minutes that the, the council actually suspended enforcement. And so, I don't want the public or anyone to misunderstand that perhaps there was some land-use moratorium on the enforcement. It, it wasn't. We're calling it a moratorium because essentially there was an administrative, there was direction by the council to administratively hold enforcement. And so, that's what you're truly lifting.
Would you prefer if I reworded my motion?
No, I'm actually fine with it, just so long as we now clarify.
Well, I could, I would, if you.
It's, it's, it's up to the council, but.
What if I say that the, the enforcement of existing code relative to vacation rentals will no longer be suspended? will no longer be suspended 90 days from today?
That is certainly fine.
Second?
Clapp?
Yes.
Wyrick?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes. Item number six, training for commissioners, board members, council members and staff.
So we, we do have several levels of training that are scheduled already, and, and some of them actually are required and some are voluntary. On March 19th, from three to five, we have ethics training, and that's required for department heads and council members because they're compensated. It's not required for commission and board members, but I'd recommend that you ask the commission and board members to attend it, because there's a lot of issues that come up in the course of our meetings and their meetings that would be addressed by this training.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just to add what the city managers noted, Assembly Bill 1234, which is the ethics training we're talking about, is required for elected officials. It's also required for members of boards or commission who receive a stipend or reimbursement for expenses. And many cities do not provide reimbursement for expenses, so it's not mandatory for them. But for those who receive a reimbursement, it actually is mandatory that they take that training once every two years.
So the planning commission that just got reimbursed for their going to training in Newport Beach, they are required now?
And they can certainly take my class on the 19th, be happy to have them there. And there's also an online class that's given by the Institute for Local Government under the auspices of the League of Cities in conjunction with the Fair Political Practices Commission. But if this, if they're receiving reimbursement for expenses, they're also required to take it.
Okay, then, on April 9th, the California Office of Historic Preservation is putting on preservation commissioner training, and we're the host. So it's, it's not just for us, it's for historic preservation commissioners from the whole region. And so...
Are they gonna stay on vacation rentals?
You know, knowing, knowing how the state works, I think there'll be a lot of vacation rentals.
They're asking you to stay at a councilperson's house.
Yeah.
But, but I think that, to the extent that, that, that other members of the staff or, or council is interested, that might be a good one. Harassment avoidance training, we used to call it harassment training, but that seemed completely wrong. There's, there's a general session, which is for all, let's see, it's for, it's for all employees. And then there's a harassment avoidance for supervisors, that's just for supervisory employees, and that, that would be optional for council, commission and board members. But harassment has actually been an issue in some people's mind, and, and I think it's important that council members and commissioners and board members, to the extent that they can attend this, attend it, because it increases your sensitivity to what kinds of things can be perceived as harassment, and the consequences for an organization like ours. We do have an obligation to protect our employees from harassment, and so I think to the extent that people attend this, it's going to show that we're doing our due diligence. And then we're also gonna work on customer training, customer service training for staff, which is a good thing just to constantly reinforce.
Well, I, I, I think that we could encourage, if the harassment avoidance general, if we can encourage council, commission and board members to attend, that would be great. I think we should.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Rather than encourage, I think that it, that it should be required.
Could we require it, even if it's optional?
If we're talking about the, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you're talking about the man, the, what I'll call mandatory sexual harassment training, it's mandated for employees and supervisors. The council, elected officials are actually exempt, so you yourself certainly can require it amongst yourselves, and you can require it of your employees as well. It's required of the supervisors for certain.
What about appointees?
Appointees, again, they serve at your, they serve at your pleasure. You can mandate attendance, the question is, if they don't attend, what do you do?
Well, a minimum on that, I'd like to see the chairs of each commission. That would be a minimum, because I think we take, you said, Mr. Howard, sexual harassment, and that's, Mr. Clark didn't say that, but that's the old form, but harassment comes in a lot of different ways, and I think people need to understand that, and especially the chairs of each of our commission will, minimum, they need to understand that. I think it would help them govern better.
I mean, I would, I would definitely say I highly encourage everyone to go.
Right.
I, I was just wondering if we could make it mandatory, even if it's optional, because I, I don't want, it's a fine line, but I would definitely highly encourage everyone to go to it. So I, I don't know if that's an issue or...
Well, again, Mr. Mayor, members of council, you, as the council, can mandate your commissioners to attend any type of training that you wish. The question is, if the commissioners don't do it, are you prepared to censure a commissioner? Are you prepared to have them removed from their position? And you wanna, you make sure you give them enough notice and opportunity to make sure that their calendars are clear to be able to do this. So, and maybe this time around, you, you wanna give them strong encouragement, with particular focus on the chair, and maybe the vice chair, but certainly it's, it's your call, at the end of the day, whether you want to, as a council, mandate that type of training.
And I, I feel like we should highly encourage them. I think mandating them right now, I, I think that's, I, I don't know if they'd be available to do it those days, and to begin with, but I think highly encouraging them to attend would be my preference.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is there always, is there also an online harassment avoidance training as well?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm not aware of any, and that's primarily because the statute requires that it be interactive. And it's, it's a little difficult to do an interactive, they could come up with some quiz, but I'm not aware that they've done that. But it's, the statute particularly, specifically provides that it needs to be interactive, where there's a dialogue, where you can ask questions, and where the, the trainers, which will be myself and a partner, will be able to provide responses to those questions, examples and the like. Unlike AB 1234, which does not require interactive, and there is a free online training.
I think we need to provide...
1875 training does not.
Yeah. I, I just think that mandated, if we mandate, then we do need to add some consequences if they don't go.
You know, another, another alternative is to mandate it, but not necessarily this session, and, and provide another session at another time.
Could do that.
So just say, you know, we're mandating that you do this within the course of the next six months or year, whatever you wanna say, and then we'll see how many people make the first one, and then we'll try and make arrangements for another session.
Okay. Would, would that, is that difficult to orchestrate, or for staff to do, or is that just, what if one person...
Mr. Mayor, members of council, essentially it's the lawyers that put that program on as, and is what has been stated in a previous agenda, item time is money.
Yeah.
And so if you want to do, we'll do it five times.
Thank you very much.
Possibly a bit of a financial self-interest there.
But the reality is, lawyer, we're prepared to do it for you, and, and your commissioners
and employees. The question is, how many, how much expense do you wanna go through? Once, this is a, the, the training programs that we have, I've done many, many times, and they're sort of what I call in the can, just need updating periodically to reflect new case law and new statutes, so it doesn't take a lot of prep work. But the time to put the, it's a minimum, it's a minimum for six, two hours, and so you will, you're gonna be paying for that time.
Well, I like the idea of strongly encouraging on this round. However, I would wanna make sure that there's a mechanism for informing the planning commission members that they're in a little bit of a different category by virtue of receiving reimbursement.
Okay.
Would that be done by staff?
Yeah, we'll do that.
It's HPC that way too?
Yeah.
Oh, anybody who's... Been reimbursed, in other words, for anything.
Yeah, I guess they, I guess they have. What about Arts Commission?
I think anytime there's any training...
Well, we're talking about travel reimbursement.
Yeah.
Again, we're only talking about the AB 1234 ethics training.
Yeah, that's the ethics...
Right, right.
Right.
Mayor, Laura, and city council members, I have invited all the commissions and the building appeals board to the AB 1234, and I've had a good response, so I think we'll have a good turnout.
Yeah, I just think we might wanna, you know, those that are in that different category per Mr. Howard's...
I did tell the planning commission and, like, city council elected officials that they do need to be there. It is mandatory for them.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, just, just one more item. There's, there's an attachment on making meetings manageable, and this one was presented to the chair of the planning commission with really good results. And I'm just thinking it might be beneficial to have some time, maybe when the chairs of all the commissions and the mayor or something get together, and we, we have that presentation for them.
I agree.
It gives you the tools and the confidence to run a meeting.
Right.
I read through all this last time, I highlighted a lot of points, and I think it's really, really effective.
I, I think one of the, you know, again, when you're, when you're seated on a commission, you're not trained. You show up and, and you, you learn by being on the commission, so having training is important. I, I think a chair has to recognize, he's there to, he or she is there to facilitate a meeting, not be the meeting. And I think it's important that, that we understand, that we share that, that, that what the roles of each person is, and so I could, we could train and train and train as far as, it's gonna be beneficial. Beneficial.
All right, well, thank you. Anything else?
That, that's...
I'm trying to facilitate the meeting and make it. Any other input, or, no? All right. We're gonna reconvene as Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency, and I will entertain a motion, I guess, to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Items 5A through 5B for the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency.
7A.
7A.
Excuse me.
It's late.
Oh, 7A and 5A and 5B, sorry. Two pages.
Clapp?
Yes.
Wyrick?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes, and I'll turn it back to the city council meeting. Any reports from council members?
I, I could start out quickly, just, I did attend the OBGMA, and Betsy had asked me to, so, so, so we can spell, dispel the rumor that there is communication between council members. But then getting to the point, being my first meeting, I was, I was lost. I was in the dark, there's a lot to learn and a lot to know. But something that, that came up, which I thought was incredible, was a discussion about reclaimed water and how to bring it up to the east end of the valley, or at least to think about how to get it to the lake. So I, that, that made my, that made my night, and then the scariest part of the evening was the fact that the lake is at 51%, and that it's, it'll probably be at 50% real soon. And, and I think it, I think it would behoove us to have, is it Wickstrom, Steve?
Steve Wickstrom.
To have him come in again on a bi-monthly basis and just talk. And, and again, I don't know how to approach any type of restricting water use, but I think if we had, as a council, had to think about that, we need to think about our landscape ordinance, and what we could attach to it that might, you know, some cities are on watering even days, and some cities are on, you know, we, we, Mayor Laura and I deal with that all the time, but we need to be thinking in terms of that, and right now we're not. And, and I don't think we can rely on Casidis, Casidis or Golden State to make those, you know, those decisions. I think they're ours.
Well, thank you for that report. I do have two quick items I wanna touch on. The first item is that I've been asked, I was asked to see if I'd be interested to represent VCOG in a, a policy committee through SCAG, which would be transportation, and it would, it's gonna, I'm gonna be, see if I could be nominated by VCOG, I guess, on Thursday, so I don't know if I am or not, but I'm just happy for the opportunity that they ask. I think it's very, very important. And the second item, it doesn't have to do with the city, it has more to do with the school district. I participated in what's called a psych council, and because of my daughters being at Topa Topa, I participated on that, and it was good and worrisome. Worrisome because our school district is so thin that a lot of the work that has to be done, has to be done by a lot of the teachers. And this psych council is set up for the teachers to meet, along with volunteer parents to come in and input on certain issues. And the good stuff is that there is a lot of good dialogue between the principal, teachers, and interested parents. And it's, it's important to reflect that we are thin, we are spread thin everywhere, but we can do it, and, and we, they are doing it in the school district, and I just wanna applaud them, and also encourage other parents to go to these psych councils, because they, they do make a difference. So that's my report.
Councilmember Clapp, anything?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Wyrick? Mr. Clark?
Yes, I'm sort of building on the transportation theme. Congresswoman Brownlee had a meeting today with all the city managers. I'm sorry.
Mike, oh. I'm glad it's you that's forgetting this.
I've really been bad today. Congresswoman Brownlee had a meeting with all the city managers in the county today to start getting input on our transportation needs, and the reason is that she is on the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, which is a very difficult committee assignment to get, and a very powerful committee assignment. That's kind of the good news. The, the other good news is she says everybody there recognizes that they need to do something about infrastructure. The bad news is, they're nowhere near agreeing on where the money comes from. They, you know, the, the idea of raising gas tax, which is like almost a user fee for transit, is pretty much off the table, and there's a million different ideas about how to finance government going on right now, and they're all conflicting with each other, and I think it's, it sounds like it's bogging them down.
Question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, councilmember. Bro, Wyrick, go.
Well, I'd like to add on to that just real quickly.
Yeah, I had a...
Okay, real quickly, at the VCT meeting, one of the things that we discussed is the lack of money to repair that rail line, where it's an ongoing problem. And there was just another one back east, same thing, truck got stuck on a track, and it's gonna take like $35 million to fix that crossing, and they say they're not, they can't get the money, they can't get the money. And every meeting, we talk about adding a quarter cent sales tax, and take it to the ballot for transportation, but it's always the same discussion, how could we get people to pass a tax on themselves? That overall, there's this reluctance to do so.
But I think that's an interesting point, because that is the main corridor in and out of the port capacity development that they're talking about for Ventura County. And that is usually, makes it eligible for sometimes federal support, for enhancing transportation corridors for international trade. And I was wondering if that came up in the discussion with Brownlee or not, in terms of tapping that rationale for some support for those kinds of projects that are associated with a port development that impacts overall international trade, rather than just Ventura County.
We, that specific point wasn't hit though, at all, but, but I think the real point was that, it used to be that they would adopt these transportation bills that went on for five years, and so you could actually plan, because transportation projects take a lot of time, and they need a lot of momentum and so forth. But what's been happening for the last quite a long time, I'm not sure how many years, is they just keep kicking the can down the road, you know, they reauthorize it for two months, and then they reauthorize it for a year, and then another six months. So nobody really knows with any degree of certainty whether there's money in the pot. And, and I think what she was saying is, they have acknowledged as an entire Congress, they can't just keep doing this. It's not good for the country, but it's a, it's a very tough climb to figure out how to fund it.
I, I don't wanna go left or right on this, but there's one thing that happens when you don't do something over a five-year period. You get to go back to those people and get donations, and every one of them are good at it. And, you know, I, I have family that's in wind energy, and they are impacted constantly with the fact that no one wants to put a five-year or a 10-year plan out there. They want it every two years, so every two years, there's a cycle of donations. And it's interesting, you're seeing it in, in all aspects of our governing. It's about money.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's all about money.
I, I do wanna just make one comment, because I attended also a roundtable with, with Congress Brownlee and Congress DeFolio, with, with certain people in the, elected officials, and, and also against the CEO of Port Wainimi, Air Control, and then also obviously SCAG President, Mr. Carl Morehouse. And they were touching upon the... And they were touching upon the value of Port Wainimi and how much jobs it brings and how much money, how much support they need from the Transportation Committee in the federal state. So, they were, and even aviation came in. So, it was really, it was a really interesting conversation, a roundtable that they had and discussed. And again, the main problem is that they can't, they can't figure out how to, where all that money's going to come from. So, yeah. If any more questions, Mr. Howard?
I probably should stay quiet, but in light of the discussion of priorities, I'll let you know who's accountable for one item and that's the White Paper on Cultural, Paleontological and Archaeological Resources. I want to report to you that a draft has been completed and it's now undergoing review. You will have it well before your meeting on the 14th, I believe, when the item is to be discussed. So, you'll have that available for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Officer? I was going to call you chief. Thank you, thank you.
I'm blanking on the name. One of your colleagues met with a neighborhood group, West Ojai, Sunday night.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just want to say what a, it was really positive and the attitude of the police department that he reflected in that discussion with that neighborhood was just really exemplary. And I just, I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for, on behalf of that neighborhood group, because I think it does reflect the entire attitude of the police department. It's very good.
Great, awesome. Thank you. Rhonda?
Real quick, so when Greg was up there speaking this evening about Glenn Hawke's retiring and all the plans that we've gone through down in the garage while I worked with him, and we actually sent a bunch of the stormwater plans, roads and some other history to the county and they're working, we're working with the county for free, they're going to put some of this information to their GIS system and so we'll have a good record. So, I'm really, kudos to Greg for contacting the person at the county and then there are a lot of plans, so it'll be nice to get him scanned and have that history.
Great, thank you.
Well, I like your view of this, that it doesn't have all those plans in it.
With that, I'll adjourn the meeting.